No feedback. Great. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our meeting here on Tuesday, March the 7th. And we're going to go ahead and do a roll call first.
Thank you, Chair Madron. Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
Supervisor Wilson?
Present.
Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Supervisor Bone? Supervisor Bushnell. Good morning. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nikki. And would you please join us with a salute to the flag? Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Thank you very much. So with that, CAO Hayes, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, Chair Madron, we have a number of modifications. Item I three is going to be pushed to the last item on the agenda. Item D four is being, or excuse me, D 11 is being pulled for discussion. And items D three and D five will be pulled from the agenda and will return at a date uncertain.
Great. Thank you very much for that. So do we have any questions, clarifications on the consent agenda from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
Can we wait till after public comment?
Sure, certainly. So yeah, this is the stuff before public comment. Any other board questions, clarifications on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go to the public. And we'll start with the Zoom. And Nikki, if you'll help me out here, I'm pulling mine up.
Yes, Chair Madron, we have caller 5603 with their hand up.
Great, 5603, you've got three minutes. Star six to unmute.
Good morning, Supervisors. This is Colin Fitz, the Executive Director of CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I wanted to address item D seven on the consent agenda. CRTP appreciates the county's efforts to address legislative limits on transportation revenue raising. And we don't have any objection to the legislation that's requested in the resolution. But we would like to request a broadening of the scope a little bit. The staff report first doesn't mention the discussion that's taken place, including at previous meetings of the board, to devote part of the funding of a future transportation sales tax to public transit, which, just like the roads, is in serious need of increased investment. Maybe even more so since we'll be relying on public transit more and more heavily as both the climate strategy and economic development strategy in the years to come. So when the request is taken to our state legislators, we would ask that it specifically include public transit as an allowed use. We also want to request that, well, the board is considering requesting changes to vehicle registration fees, that you also consider registration fees that can be used to fund both public transit as well as bike and pedestrian safety improvements. So for example, we believe you should consider requesting legislation that authorizes a new vehicle registration fee specifically to help fund local transit. Also would refer you to Vehicle Code 9251, which authorizes a vehicle registration fee to pay for bike infrastructure, but currently sunsets in 2025. So I think the county should consider asking that law to be extended to allow the option to be put for local voters. And finally, we would request that the county also look into other registration fees that the law already allows through this process, such as Vehicle Code 9250.4, which authorizes a fee that can be used to invest in active transportation and transit to reduce pollution from private vehicles. So in sum, we just ask you to consider all the options that are available for funding critical public transit and street safety infrastructure going forward, and to broaden your request to legislators a bit to specify public transit as a use. And also, to add, as appropriate, perhaps add some additional requests to our state legislators. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker. And next, we have...
Chair Madron, if you'd like me to...
Yes, please, Nikki.
We have caller 3053 with their hand up.
3053, you've got three minutes. Please let us know the item you're speaking on.
Good morning. Thomas Boulder here. Two things. One is the agenda modification in regards to I three. I think now would be maybe the right time. Just it'd be nice to get, that has a lot to do with everyone's livelihood in this community, whether you're poor or against. So it'd be nice to have like a 30-minute heads-up, or maybe even a 15-minute heads-up for people that are following whatever side they are in. And then the other part, as far as consent that I'm talking to, is I didn't catch the exact item, but all the last comments are talking about public transportation and all that kind of stuff. Let's remember that we're in rural Humboldt County, and we also need to maintain our roads and use roads for already existing infrastructure, repairs, maintenance, cleaning out culvert. I own, there was a culvert that I'd asked Public Works to clean out about 15 years ago, right in town of Redway, and they didn't. And they just had to do an emergency collapse repair because it wasn't cleaned out on the end. So let's not forget about maintenance of our existing infrastructure when we talk about using these tax dollars. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Speaker. And I don't see any other hands up in Zoom. So we'll take comments on the consent agenda from those here today in the audience. If anybody would like to speak with us, please come to the podium at this time. And please let us know which item you're speaking on. And you've got three minutes. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm not speaking on items on the consent calendar.
That's what this time is for.
Okay. The rest of the items, when are public comments welcome?
Yes, they are. On every single item, there'll be public comment opportunity. As well as at the end of the consent agenda, we'll have public comment on non-agenda items also.
Perfect. I'll be back.
All right. Thank you very much. Always good to get clarification. All right. No one else here in the audience wishing to speak? We'll bring it back to the board. And I will say that as far as item I three being put to the very end of the agenda, our best guess right now at this time, and of course, it is a guess, is that it could come on as early as 2:00 or as late as 4:00, but more than likely, it will be in that slot. It will absolutely be in the afternoon, after lunch, and after we come back and start our agenda back up. So I also, once we come back at 1:00 after lunch, we'll see where we're at on the agenda and try and give an update on that time so that folks will have a heads-up on that. So with that, bring it back to the board. Any comments, questions, discussion on the consent agenda? Yes. Supervisor Wilson?
There's a question for CAO. So we had a comment with relationship to what's perceived as a sort of limitation with regards to our legislative sort of requests. Can that be, what was asked for was a sort of broadening of the perspective with relationship to the term roads, to typically, sometimes we use just transportation. And maybe we could just be more broad in the future. But you're not perceiving that as limiting us from lobbying for more transit, more, you know, bike and pad and alternative transportation modes?
Yeah, that's correct, Supervisor Wilson. This legislation merely allows us that flexibility to pursue tax measures in the future to ensure there's that capacity within the mandated caps. It's the actual ballot language that will stipulate what those dollars can or cannot be used for. So that's where we'll want to sort of fine-tune that language to ensure that it meets the county's needs.
Okay. So this is sort of like a such-as language as opposed to shall?
Precisely.
Okay. I just want to, because we do have our legislative priorities, which already prioritize, you know, all these transportation modes. And so, okay, I just want to make sure that we are flexible with that. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve consent.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any additional discussion? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, through the chair. I just want to recognize Seroptimus of International of Il River Valley and Eureka, several certificate award winners. And tonight at the River Lodge in Fortuna, they're going to be presenting. And it's just a really good organization, and congratulations. I'm not going to take the time to read all of them. I frankly would probably butcher the names, so I don't want to. But I really am excited to be able to be there tonight and to support these women in business.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Wilson?
Well, I'll just have to do the same because both Supervisor Madron and I were at the Seroptimus Awards Ceremony for Humboldt Bay region. And I want to say, it's one of my favorite events to go to, award ceremonies. There's just, it's just the breadth of what this organization looks at in terms of what accomplishments are. They aren't just, you know, getting a high degree in something. And it's not just, or being employed in a fancy job. It's like, sometimes it's just like getting through some pretty significant challenges that life throws at you. And the support of these women, of other women, is just very heartfelt. And I'm going to put it out there. This organization has, you know, been pushing for women's rights and suffrage and the whole thing for 100 years. And they, I'm going to say, they come off as very, I'm going to put this out, they're very traditional in some sense. But I have to tell you, the message is still very revolutionary. And I want to commend them for that. So anyone who thinks this organization's not for them should reconsider and check it out.
Great. Thank you very much. Absolutely. That's coming up in April. Yeah, absolutely. Now, I agree with both Supervisor Bushnell and Wilson that an amazing organization supporting women. And thank you, Seroptimus, for all that you do. And I know it's not on the agenda. We do have the continuation of the emergencies, both for the earthquake and for the windstorms. And now we have an emergency with the snowstorms. And it's not on the agenda, so we won't get into a discussion on it. But I know that Supervisor Bushnell, you've been in discussions with Sheriff Hansel. They're adding up the data. If you have had losses or impacts, please report that to the Sheriff's Department because, to the Ag Department, because these emergency declarations are based on those numbers. So please let us know. And if you have an emergency right now, as Supervisor Bushnell and Bone have been talking on the airwaves and trying to work with all the services, if you've got an emergency and you are stuck, you're running out of supplies, that is a 911 call. So do not delay on that. And we're all trying to look out for each other. It's been quite a winter. So we may very well have another declaration of an emergency coming forward in the future here. So I just wanted to at least put a little highlight on that. And everybody, please stay safe out there. Keep an eye on your neighbors, checking on everybody, right? So it's been quite the drill this winter. All right. With that, we have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Or, excuse me?
Are you up?
Oh, I am up. Is everybody up? Almost. We'll give you a minute because it'd be...
That is definitely operator. Let's do, let's do roll call.
Okay. We'll roll call it this time.
Okay. So was that Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. And so now, we will go to items pulled from consent, I believe. Or let me see, just real check. Actually, next is public comment on non-agenda items, to stick with the agenda as printed. So this is an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. And we'll start with Zoom. And I do see one hand up there, and that is 5163. You've got three minutes. Press star six to unmute. Star six to unmute. 5163, this is your opportunity. Just a quick note for folks on the Zoom. If you are watching an audio of this meeting, it has a delay. So you may miss your opportunity to speak. So it's good to turn down the audio on any video that you're watching so you'll know that, and listen to the phone for your opportunity to speak. So one last chance. 5163, this is your opportunity. Star six to unmute. All right. Seeing no action there at that end. We'll go to those here in the audience today. And we know we have at least one person who wanted to talk with us under public comment on non-agenda items. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Good morning, Board. My name is Deena Moore. I live on the Lone Star Ranch in Neyland, California, fifth generation. And I wanted to come today to personally express my appreciation for the hay drops and express my appreciation to Supervisor Bushnell, Supervisor Bone, and let the rest of you know that from our rural area, the service was amazing. We have, my husband, son, and son-in-law have been out feeding cattle for the last 10 days. We've fed as many cattle as we can and have gone as far as we can. My daughter, who Supervisor Bushnell spoke with, Lauren, is housebound with her three children. And I came to town 10 days ago because our youngest daughter is due with a child at any moment, and we didn't know if I could make it to town. So it's been a long time since we've had a winter like this. And I just, again, want to express my appreciation. I also want to express my appreciation for the round-the-clock service that has been provided by our county road crew. They have done an amazing job. My daughter's the president of the Neyland School Board and reaches out to our county road crew. And they are amazing in providing service for helping to keep the school grounds open. So that's it. I just, again, am here to say thank you, Board. Thank you for your service to all of us in the community. As a member of the very rural residential, rural community, nice to see you and appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here today that would like to speak with us on items not on the agenda? Seeing no other public members, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just really want to sincerely send my heartfelt thanks to everybody that was able to help with getting the hay dropped. It's a multitude of people. It could not have happened without so many people coming together. And to the Humboldt County Roads, Highway Patrol, Caltrans, fire departments. It really has been, you know, really fun for a few days, and that was it. We're over it. And I just can't thank everybody enough that has came together and really helped the communities of Humboldt County. You know, I came in yesterday and it got into Eureka, and there was sun. I haven't seen sun for a lot of days. And so that was, it's a different world up here. But Southern Humboldt, Willow Creek, those areas, the High Mountains, are really having a lot of traumatic things happen, and it's not fun. I can't thank PG&E enough right now for all of their efforts in keeping people on, getting assistance with generators. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that's involved in trying to weather the storm, if I could just say that.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Bushnell. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I think Michelle hit them all. It's pretty amazing watching all the people work up at the, we were up at the air tower all day on Sunday, up there for a little bit yesterday. And they're actually bringing in a bigger bird. We're looking at, and to put it in perspective, there's about 1,800 cow cab pairs out there. A little over $2 million in agricultural value. And people don't know where their cows are, a lot of them. They've got an idea. But it was, some of the pictures have been pretty amazing. They drop it into a place where they find a trail, and then 20 cows come out from under the trees. So they're doing a really good job with the help of our beloved sheriff, super sheriff. We've got a big bird coming in today. We're able to put five and six bales on the CDF. And the Coast Guard helicopter, this will be able to take probably 20 bales. So it's been a pretty good effort by a lot of people. On Sunday, there was hay being brought in by pickups and everything else. So, and just clarification, the air support is going to be covered by emergency services as we go forward. The hay being dropped is being, is going to be billed to the ranchers that are getting it. They are paying for their hay. But much like a flood, car accident, or things like that, emergency services are providing services that need to be for economic and for health reasons.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Any other board member with any non-agenda comments?
I do also want to, since we're thanking our staff and others, I do, the roads crew has been great, and PG&E crew's been amazing. And I want to say, like, at the first couple of days, I was getting some phone calls about some people annoyed that they weren't getting service as quickly as maybe they thought they have in the past. Now, it's really communications of thanks and just a real understanding. I think, I think at first, a lot of folks didn't quite grasp the magnitude of this weather event. And they didn't quite see how stretched and hardworking our crews have been. And once they have seen it and witnessed it and working with them, there's just overwhelming appreciation. And so it's nice to, I just want to say, we often don't get a lot of emails thanking the board, but we have been getting them in this case. And so I want to be, I want to project those back out again, and it's nice to get those. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. And I'll just close by saying that we're not out of the woods yet, are we? Bottom line is that we have, we're wrapping up this low cold pressure that sends this cold air off of the continent up there in British Columbia. That's why we get the low snow loads. But now everything's shifting out of the west, and we're getting an atmospheric river connection come Thursday. That could potentially melt quite a bit of snow. But hopefully, with the cold night temperatures and other things, we'll have a slow snow melt. But it's not a time to let down our guard. Please keep an eye on each other. Thursday, Friday, some of the rivers are predicted to potentially get towards warning stage or maybe higher come Saturday. So stay vigilant, stay prepared. Get out and get resupplied while you can tomorrow. It's going to be relatively calm weather tomorrow before we have our next series of storms. And they're still predicting that this might be a set of storms coming all the way through the middle of the next week. So stay vigilant, keep an eye on each other. Supervisor Bone?
One highlight, the U.S. drought report has us officially out of a drought. Half of the county has none, and the next to lowest stage is abnormally dry. So we are not, and actually, only 25% of the state is in any drought state whatsoever with the new map that's out. So the only thing is, is reservoirs, everything else are looking really well. And now we're just making sure our groundwater and our, is replenished, and that's happening.
Absolutely.
It's snowed in Disneyland.
That's almost a first, I imagine. So yeah, it's, the rains have come in the kinds of amounts that allow for a lot of good infiltration. So we're thankful to that. And we'll be, I think the task force is getting together to come back to said, next meeting or the one after, to discuss the drought emergencies, et cetera. So, all right. With that, we are going to go ahead and move forward with items pulled from consent. And we have item D 11, which is a resolution of the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors dissolving the Humboldt County Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee. And I'm going to read the entire resolution. And I just want to say thank you to all the citizen volunteers who have taken part in this committee over the last five years. You've done amazing work. We couldn't do our work without you. And with all the changes happening, where the funding's coming and other things, it seemed like time to go ahead and wrap this part up. But there's going to continue to be a lot of opportunity for input and engagement with the public and all of the various groups helping our community through our continuum of care and all the other programs associated with that. So I'll read the resolution. Whereas on February 27, 2018, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors adopted Resolution Number 18-14, which established the Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee. And whereas on July 24, 2018, the Board of Supervisors rescinded and replaced that resolution through adoption of Resolution 18-73. And whereas the Humboldt, the Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee has dedicated a tremendous amount of time, energy, and expertise for over four years to the effort of working to find solutions for housing and homeless solutions. And whereas, due to the changes in funding and homeless and housing solutions, the need to consolidate efforts with less duplication has become apparent. And whereas, state and federal discretionary homelessness solutions funding available to Humboldt is awarded to the local continuum of care, known as the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition, for which the county of Humboldt serves as the administrative entity. And whereas, the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition is a body open to public participation and input on spending priorities. And whereas, the Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services will provide an annual report to the Board of Supervisors about the performance of the Humboldt Housing and Homeless Coalition, including, without limitation, its involvement in the community input process. And whereas, matching funding made available through the state for a local housing trust fund dictates the administration of such funds through guidelines and procedures that include public participation for recommendations of funding through the Board of Supervisors. And whereas, the formation of a regional housing trust fund would require multi-jurisdictional coordination and a separate multi-jurisdictional process for recommendations on funding that involves a robust community input process. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors encourages public participation in all funding decisions made thereby through the regular agenda process. Now, therefore, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby resolves as following that Resolution Number 18-73 is hereby rescinded in its entirety. And the Housing Trust Fund and Homelessness Solutions Committee is hereby dissolved. And we thank them for their service. They really have been doing an amazing job, meeting monthly for over four years, working tirelessly to try and come up with solutions, working with county staff and other groups, nonprofits, et cetera, in our community. We know the problems have not gone away. And really, what we're trying to do, as this resolution states, is try and be more efficient with everybody's time in moving forward. So with that, I just wanted to see if Director Beck or Director Ford wanted to make any comments on this before I open up to public comment. They've both been very involved in helping us with this committee. Thank you. Director Beck, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Madron. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I think I'd just say I appreciate all of the time of all of the members and the staff that have spent on these regular meetings. And I look forward to us moving forward with a regional trust fund or other possibilities that we have in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Beck.
Thank you, Chair Madron. John Ford with Planning and Building. I'd like to echo Director Beck's comments. I know that the people who have served on the committee have been deeply passionate and truly care about solving the homelessness issue and providing housing. And change is hard. And so really, respect what they've done, respect their perspective, and the foundation and framework that they've laid. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ford. And so with that, we'll go to public comment in the Zoom. Do we have any hands up, Nikki?
Chair Madron, I see no hands up in Zoom.
No hands up in Zoom on this item. Anybody here in the audience today who would like to make a public comment? I know Lynn Martinez, the chair of this committee, wanted to be here today but was not able to and has expressed her deep appreciation to all the committee members and the county staff who have helped with this. And a lot of changes in the last four years have occurred. So with that, any public comment from those in the audience? We didn't have any there. And I'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you, Chair Madron, and folks who have helped shepherd this from the staff level and those who have volunteered on it. I just, I got a number of calls and questions about this from folks who were concerned that we were deprioritizing these issues. And I assured them that the intent was really to reduce duplication of effort and that a lot of the folks who participate in this also participate in our Housing and Homeless Coalition meetings. And so, and I encourage the folks who reached out to participate in these housing... the folks who reached out to participate in these Housing and Homeless Coalition meetings, which are open to the public, and the agenda does state this, but just to make sure everyone's clear, this does not mean we're deprioritizing our Housing Trust Fund or homeless services. But it does mean that those meetings will be a more concentrated group of folks who will, will have these meetings on a, right now it's a quarterly basis, but I believe it's flexible based on the needs. So, I just wanted to state that, that that doesn't mean we're turning away from these priorities in any way. And I also want to reiterate thanks for those committee members.
Great, thank you very much. Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Wilson?
First, I'd like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation, if that's possible.
And I'll second.
Thanks. And then I want to speak to one of the advancements that's occurred. One of the reasons we, we, we did the committee in the way that it was with sort of two missions with relationship to homelessness and housing, was that we just really didn't have a, a good handle on, the, the funding was very mushy at the time in terms of like, it just was all kind of coming in into one pot. We really have since, and especially, you know, especially with the help of, of the commission and the help of this board and the committee, there has been a big expansion of dedicated funding, both for homelessness work that's being done, and we're seeing really big response with relationship to that and things being built. But then also with the Housing Trust Fund, there's a lot of good efforts inter-jurisdictionally with relationship to discussions around a regional Housing Trust Fund. But also, I want to thank the board for, through the TOT, creating a dedicated funding stream for our Housing Trust Fund. I think it's really important. It's a big, big accomplishment to get over that hump, and I really appreciate the board's efforts on that. And also, there is funding at the state specific for that now, too. So there's just, the, the funding streams are definitely, they're, they're, they're in their lanes more these days. And so, people who want to work on one or the other have places to go to do that. And, and there's stuff happening. So I just want to appreciate everyone's past efforts, and encourage everyone to stay involved and move forward with these as we go forward. Thanks.
Okay, any other board comments? Okay, it looks like, go ahead Supervisor Bone.
And I just, and on, on these extreme weather nights and everything else, I make a habit of calling, and there is still space available, the rescue mission and, and places on all these extreme weather nights. And, and I apologize now, there are some rules you have to follow. But there is housing available, and, and so I, hopefully people that are in a dire straits are taking advantage of it.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Any other additional comment from the board? I will just highlight real quickly that in this resolution, it does ask that DHHS provide us with an annual report on how our systems are working. You know, because there is a lot of concern that people want to still make sure that they have access to provide input and help solve problems. And I know DHHS is committed to that. So I think that's great. So, on an annual basis, we'll be getting an update from DHHS on how our systems are working in regards to this. So with that, we have a motion and a second. We've taken comment. Supervisor Bone?
And not to put, put Director Beck on the spot, but I'd sure like to have it more like quarterly or something else. This is not an issue we can look at every year. This is an issue we look at every day on a personal basis. And I'd, and I'd like to know what progress is being made and what we can do to help those situations. I know they're, they've been working, we have a couple big things that are going to be popping real soon. They're going to open a lot of eyes. And I know Connie and her team have worked on tirelessly for the last four years. But it'd be nice to get at least quarterly updates on, real shortly, of, of what we're doing. I, I saw that annual report, and I'm going, hopefully there's four more reports in between that one, so.
Thank you very much Supervisor Bone. And Supervisor, or Director Beck, does that seem reasonable and, and doable? Yeah, great. Thank you very much. Yeah, I agree. Annually is a long time, so quarterly reports with an annual detail. So, thank you for that. So we have our voting blocks up, so we'll give it a try. Can we all go ahead and vote and try our system here?
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
Yay, that's a first for this board. Only took us three months. I know, it seems silly, but it's a big deal for us. All right, thank you very much for that. Okay, with that, we're now moving on to our regular agenda. And our first item is I1, consider making the at-large appointment to the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And we have Assistant Clerk of the Board Tracy D'Amico here to present.
Good morning. So before you is the consideration of making the at-large appointment to the Humboldt County Planning Commission. In January, you were notified that the current at-large had termed out. And so we allowed the appropriate amount of time, which is four plus weeks, to accept applications. We've received four applications, and they are attached to your agenda item. And I've also provided you a blank ranking sheet. This appointment will be filled for a four-year term with an expiration date of January 31st, 2027. And this term is set by the establishing ordinance. And they, I did contact all of the applicants. I think they're could be present in the chambers. And I know that Melanie might be on the phone, and I'm not sure about the others, but they've all been notified. So I would recommend that you speak with them, and then look at your sheet and do some choice ranking, go from there.
Great, thank you very much Tracy. So, what we'll do first is just very quickly take any questions or clarifications from the board. And then we'll go to public comment. And if any of the applicants are available, that would be a great chance for them to, to speak. And then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. We'll see if we can come to agreement. If we can't, then you'll see that there's a sheet at your desk there with all four names. And so we'll do a voting procedure to finalize our decision if we can't come to agreement before that point. But let's go ahead and see where we're at. Are there any questions or clarifications from the board? Okay, with that, we'll go to Zoom. Is there anybody in Zoom that would like to make comment on our at-large appointment to the Humboldt County Planning Commission? Currently don't see any hands up for that. Okay, and so we'll go ahead and bring it to the audience here today. Please step forward, and you'll have three minutes at them, at the mic. Welcome.
Good morning Supervisors. I'm Mike Newman, and I'm part of the ex of Humboldt Planning Commission Committee Members. And I have put my application in, as you see there. I didn't put a lot of information in there because I thought that, you know, from my past experience and things that you have seen and done, that you would be able to take a look at things. I try to bring common sense with all of my decisions. I listen, I read all of the reports, and ask questions to the staff who very well, do very well, and have those reports ready for us. Sometimes, you know, there are controversies, as you well know, as I see that there is something on the agenda today from a past Planning Commission decision here. So, I, I'm just putting this forth. I'm here in person, I'm a local businessperson, have been in the community for many years, participated in community events, been chairs of boards and everything. I bring experience, I bring a level head, and that's what I'm putting forth to you. So I would appreciate your vote. I would continue on this, be happy to, to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Newman, and thank you for your service up to this date. Next? We've got three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello everyone. My name is Sarah West. I currently work in economic development with the city of Eureka. However, I'm a local planning nerd at heart, and worked in the field for several years. Humboldt is my home. I believe in serving my community. I'm committed to equity, objectivity, and finding solutions that work for everyone. Prior to economic development, I served as a community planner in our county, and have had the pleasure of traveling all over and experiencing the different communities and their needs and their challenges and their opportunities. So I've done the staff, excuse me, I've served as staff for many boards, and has also had the pleasure of serving on board. So I'm well versed in the processes of planning as they look like from both sides of the dais. And as a Planning Commissioner, it would be an honor to serve all of Humboldt. And I welcome any questions that you may have for me.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody else here? Yes, Tracy?
So I did want to let you know that I did get an email this morning from Melanie, and she was at a training, and she was going to try to pop on to Zoom when this started. So I don't know if you might see her in the queue Nikki, as well as Jerome.
Yes, they're both in there with their hands up.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And so we'll call on both of them. I saw Jerome's hand go up first. So Jerome, you can unmute yourself. And you've got three minutes Jerome, welcome.
Thank you Board of Supervisors. I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity, considering my application. I'm excited to serve the community in, in any, the way that I am best able to. And I'm here to answer any questions. I needed to be at work today, so apologize, it cannot be done personally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Melanie, welcome. You've got three minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Hi. Well, you all know me. I've been on the Planning Commission now for four years. Doesn't seem like that in some ways, or it seems like longer with COVID occurring over that time. And to sum it up, my view in terms of serving on the Planning Commission is the same. So I'm really committed to sustainable development. I believe both are important, sustainability and development, that best represent science, the trade-offs inherent in science, and the majority of the population, while also creating inclusivity for the minorities. And that's my overall view, and what I've tried to do with integrity, and I hope to continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, are there any, anyone else here in the audience here today that wanted to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just want to really express my gratitude to the applicants. They're all very well-qualified applicants. And we struggle at times to get people to apply for these positions. It's, you know, it's, it's a lot of work, and the Planning Commission is one that takes up a lot of your time, especially with doing your agendas, going through your agendas. So I just want to say they're, they're all great, greatly qualified. And I think our board has our work cut out for us.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. And yeah, it's, you know, it's nice to have the challenge of having four great applicants, right? So we thank everybody for their interest in this important position. And Planning Commissioners work really hard. I mean, it is a tremendous amount of homework that they do to be prepared for the meetings. And as Mike and others have said, you know, they do their homework. And that is no easy task. I know this, we all know this as a board member, when we get a thousand pages, you know, to read and review before our meetings. So I want to thank all of the commissioners in the Planning Commission for all their hard work over the years. Any other comments, discussion from the board? Supervisor Arroyo? We'll come back to Bone next.
I, I was going to say something similar of appreciation for the, the skills that folks are putting forward and their intention to serve. And I, I do see that, you know, we have quite a breadth of backgrounds and skills. And so, when I think about our Planning Commission right now, you know, one area that I could see frankly, there being a need for is that focus on economic development and the focus on energy, which our, our two new applicants do bring in spades. So that's one thing I wanted to point out to the board as a consideration for discussion, as we consider implementation of our Climate Action Plan and a number of, you know, energy measures from the state. I know that Jerome Curiezi brings a background, extensive background with energy planning and research, as well as transit planning. And then Ms. West also, you know, has that background with economic development, as well as serving on LAFCO and working with a lot of our little districts, which I think is a very important skill to bring forward, is understanding those little rural districts and the challenges they face. So just a couple of points for consideration.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bone? Okay. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So, that, that is, those additions are something, you know, that would broaden the, the, you know, the value of the Planning Commission. I don't want to discount Mike Newman or Melanie. They have worked very hard the last four years, and have been great assets as well. And their knowledge and the research that they both have done, I think that Mike and Melanie both bring, you know, proven assets to the Planning Commission. What I, what I want to comment about more than anything at this board right now, before we make a decision, is that we make sure, I want our Planning Commissioner, this one, to be able to, you know, participate. And so we have some issue, you know, there are some issues where people have had to recuse. And if we could look at that as well, and just, you know, know that we need, participation is, is a very key and important part to the commission. So if we can keep that in our, you know, in our minds as we're going through the decision-making process.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I got a, and that's, I worry about an employee from HTA, because we've already talked about transit, putting transit on all these tax things. And then when this item comes up, it's, it, you're going to have that issue in anything that crosses trains with the city of Eureka. So I worry about that issue. And I appreciate them working in the public service all day, and then wanting to come out and do it at night. So, we probably should do a psychology background, too. But government all day and all night must be fun. But I, I, I think it's appreciated. But I mean, there's, there's four candidates. We have two new members. One of the new members has extensive backgrounds in both energy, transportation, and the whole gamut. So, I think as we, we move forward, I, I tend to lean towards not saddling somebody that may be, just as Supervisor Bushnell said, having to recuse themselves if something comes up with transportation, because that's being such a big issue. So, I, and I, I kind of know where this is already going, I think, just my inner Johnny Carson. So, we'll go forward. And I want to, having worked with Mike for, on, when he was on the city council, and then attending Planning Commission meetings and everything else, and same with Melanie, but especially Mike, I don't think anybody comes more prepared. And I think with what's coming through with two new members already, it's some continuity would be, is, is not to be underlaid also. I mean, it, like, we're downplaying, like, we all need new, new stuff. The new stuff is coming as we, as we look at it in perspectives as, as we go. I mean, the new shiny stuff is always fun, but I sometimes think we jump on it a little too quick. So, I've already appreciated Mike. I can remember him calling me on stuff, and I'm going, I didn't see that. So, well, yeah, it's down here on page 67. I'm going, yeah, okay. So I appreciate Mike's ability to read everything, come prepared. And in all honesty, and I talk to other board members, he's probably the most calming force on the Planning Commission there is. So, that's where I'm going to be leaning. I'll be right up front. I know I'll be in the minority, but I'm getting used to that. So, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bushnell? And then Arroyo?
I mean, if we're going to do where we're leaning, I'm also, you know, I have watched, when I first got elected, I watched a lot of Planning Commission meetings because it gave me knowledge, and I learned a lot from them. I appreciated Mike's calming and his investigative, he seemed to be well-prepared and always knew in his agenda, even, sorry John, but sometimes the planners didn't know where to find something, and Mike knew right where it was. So I, I appreciate that about him. I also, you know, appreciate Melanie and her, you know, she's very dedicated to her, to the agendas as well. But I find Mike to just be very well-prepared, very calming, very reasoning. very reasoning, and very knowledgeable, so that's just my two cents.
Great, thank you. Supervisor O'Royall.
Well, since the question was raised about when folks would have to recuse themselves, I'm curious, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Counsel, but I am curious when, you know, if people do work for public agencies, which two of our applicants do, and then we have another applicant who, you know, works for another government, in what cases would people need to recuse themselves from items, or would they not be able to participate in, in certain items, given those, those employments?
They would have to recuse themselves in situations in which there was a, a conflict of interest. The, the existence of a conflict of interest would be determined on a case-by-case basis, depending on the, the situation and how it interacted with the nature of work that the particular Planning Commissioner did.
And, and just to kind of dig into that just a little bit more, so, you know, we have one applicant who works for Humboldt Transit Authority, which is a joint powers authority working, you know, throughout the county, and then one who works for a, the City of Eureka, so another government agency, are there, would, would a matter coming before the Planning Commission that involved one of those bodies, their employer, would that likely necessitate recusal, or are the functions of those bodies kind of separate from those personal interests?
Well, it depends on the specifics of the situation in which it's being considered by the Commission, but there would be a likelihood that if it involved those agencies that they work for, that there would be a conflict of interest at that point. Like I said, it would have to be determined on a case-by-case basis, but.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Supervisor Wilson.
I'm wondering if John Ford could, if I, can I ask you a couple of questions? And then, this is kind of goes to Counsel, because there's conflict of interest and then there's incompatible office, and I'm just kind of, I'm wondering if, generally speaking, when you're, I'm just wondering if the incompatible office is the, is the, is the proper venue to discuss, and don't we already have in JPAs, the, it's already been determined that they're not incompatible offices, that's how we, that's how we form JPAs, and so I was just kind of wondering about that. And then, John, I have a question, the question for you will be like, what do you see as, as potential conflicts or not conflicts? So whoever wants to start first, I apologize.
Well, I'll start. The, with, there has been a determination that it's not incompatible offices, but there could be situations in which conflict, specific conflicts of interest arise based on the nature of the situation that is being considered by the Planning Commission. So those would have to be determined based on all of the, the circumstances surrounding that particular issuer project.
Okay, for, I mean, my understanding of conflict of interest is, is a, is a financial conflict, and incompatible office is sort of a decision-making conflict. John, do you have anything to add for this?
Yeah, I think if I could, I really wouldn't add much more than what the legal counsel would be providing, but it really does come down to when you're holding an office where in both offices, you're in decision-making authority for the same project, if that helps.
Do you see much potential conflict in the past with relationship to either HTA or the City of Eureka? And again, we're determining something on not whether there is none, but no potential of, of recusal, but whether it's, it gets in the way of like, the functioning of the body.
I see awkwardness. I don't know that that's a conflict. For instance, we have an item on the agenda today where the improvements that are required actually affect the city. And so whether or not somebody acting on that, whether or not that would be a conflict or not, probably in the person's role, not, but as a staff person, I would be sensitive to the desires of the elected officials that I work for in terms of taking actions, and, and so that's something that should certainly be considered. I, I don't want to speculate on HTA, I think that that's probably a little bit more removed, although we are running into more and more conversations about how particular projects, particular land uses affect public transit, and whether or not public transit should be being included in the discussion for, say, a housing project, or whether or not something should be required. And so there could be discretion on both ends in that particular case.
Or informed discussion.
Certainly informed, yep.
Okay, that was all, thanks.
County Council.
Thank you, Chairman Joan. I would just like to add that the, a financial conflict of interest could arise in a situation in which Director Ford was explaining where someone who works for a particular agency is put in a position to either vote for or against that particular agency, because it could affect employment opportunities, et cetera.
Assuming the agency was the applicant, correct?
Well, yes, it would be most likely in situations in which the agency was the applicant, but if the agency's involved and there are conflicting interests between the applicant and the agency, and the Commissioner is in a situation to vote one side or the other, then there could be a potential conflict of interest at that point.
Okay, and we've been dealing with discussions around that with an existing, or was an existing Commissioner already. Okay, I appreciate that discussion. I, I'll, I'll throw my, sort of on the table here, I, I do feel like there is a need in our planning discussions around transit and transportation, because it is what ties all of our land use together. Ultimately, it is what is the biggest impact on our climate impacts with relationship to how we transport ourselves around. I mean, it's 40 to 50 to 60% of our carbon emissions come from just moving ourselves between work and the store and home in general, and, and I feel like a, a strong voice with relationship to that connectivity is important, and, to me. I, I also feel like the energy side of this is going to be a big deal coming up, and so Jerome has just an immense, I mean, the resume with, both work and academic is, is pretty profound with relationship to Jerome's experience, and so that's, that's, that's a, that's a void I feel like we could have filled on, on the Commission. For me, then, the kind of next in line is Sarah West, and again, the experience with relationship to LAFCO, with relationship to the county, with relationship to economic development, and having the city as a centroid of our, you know, of our economy with relationship to, most of our workforce comes here to work, and, and, and so having that connectivity is important. So that's where I, that's where I am on this, so I'll leave it to the rest of the Board to figure this out.
Supervisor Bone.
I, and we can probably, I, I think all four of the candidates are great, I appreciate Sarah stepping up, I just, I think somebody made the perfect point, she makes the wrong decision, she's going to have five elected people that may not like what she does when she goes back home, and the same thing, HTA has management and a board above them, and, and I, and I, I think the, what they bring, what these, these people bring is great, but when you ground truth it, and it doesn't matter, it's going to be 3-2, so I would just assume, I, I, mine's going to be for Mike, just because he has the longevity, and I've never got a call on him by making a wrong decision, I have nothing to do with his being, you know, but I've never got a call on him doing something wrong, so I, I'd like to make a motion for Mike Newman, and let's do our little voting thing and move on.
So, before we go to the second on that, I think we're going to end up with a split vote, no matter what we do with the nomination, based on what I'm hearing from the Board. So what I'd like to do is try and do a process where we're not having a split vote, and instead we vote on our number one, our number two, and our number three preferences, and that way we can let the will of the Board make that decision rather than ending up with split votes and stuff like that. So I would like to ask for the Board's consideration of using this sheet where we have all four names, and the way the process would work, would, you would put down your number one choice, your number two choice, your number three choice, and the person with the number one choice would get three points, number two choice, two points, your third choice would get one point, we can tally these up, I will give these all to the CIO, and then the person with the most votes would be the one that would logically be brought forward by this Board to be appointed. So again, what I'm trying to do is avoid having a split vote on the Board, and instead, all of our voices matter, and so do, yes, first, I want to go back to Supervisor Bone because he made the motion.
Well, and I haven't got a second. To bypass all that for a split vote, if you want to, in the spirit of having a unanimous vote, because you're still going to get a split vote, because unless it's, everybody comes in tied, everybody, okay, we're all even, and everybody gets a ribbon. If you would like to start with the fourth, and I mean, right down at this end, you guys vote, I will vote in conjunction with the way you guys vote, because, I mean, Ray Charles can see what's going on, and, but I think people know how I feel, and you won't have a split vote. This way, you're still going to have a split vote, doesn't change anything.
I just think it's a simplified process, and given that we have a 10 o'clock time set, I want to ask the County Council, how firm is that? We're at 10:07?
We do have outside council scheduled for 10 o'clock.
Okay.
And I have spoke to outside council, they're available until 10:45.
So we need to be moving on with that. Yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, if I could just get clarification, though, if we do the tally, then, then what? Then someone makes a motion for that person?
That would be the logical thing to do, otherwise we go back to split vote situations and go back and forth. No matter what, we're split, we have different opinions, and that's great, you know, that's the beauty of diversity, right? So I'm just trying to simplify it, make it a little less dramatic, shall we say. So let's go ahead and do this, then, as Chair, my preference would be to go ahead and make our, our vote tallies, and then we'll give these all to CIO Hayes, she can add them up, and then we can see where we are at. There you go.
Would you like me to pull my motion back, since it's just hanging out there?
Yes, please.
Chair, thank you.
Thank you for that consideration.
Chairman Joan?
Yes.
While she's telling that, I would just like to remind the Board that there will be another at-large vacancy in two years, it's a rotating for those two positions.
Right, thank you very much.
So could we get, can you, Director Ford thinks it's one year, so maybe could we?
Clarification, that's right, we alternated.
I don't have the roster in front of me, so.
You can clarify after, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, let's get the clarification, yeah.
As the Board will recall, we just modified the zoning ordinance, so it's every other year.
So the next at-large will be available next year? No, yes, okay.
Yeah, and we do keep all the applications on file, so anyone that was perhaps not selected today will be contacted and asked if they would like to apply again as well.
Great, thank you very much.
A point of order question, are we going to go to our closed session now and come back for the results?
No, we're going to wrap this up right now, I believe.
Okay, I see, thank you.
Yes, we do, because that wasn't the vote, that was just a straw vote, shall we say, that we're done right now. Could have made a fourth straw?
So giving each individual a rank of one if they were placed first, two if they were second, three if they were third.
So first gets three votes.
First gets three votes.
Second, a second preference gets two votes, third preference gets one vote. So, you know, you can do it either way, but the way you were doing it would be, the smallest number of votes would be.
And so then we have Mike with two votes, Sarah with eight votes, Jerome with seven votes, Melanie with 13 votes. Because she had four of you vote for her.
And Melanie covered?
Can I make a motion for Sarah, it sounds like?
Hang on, just a second, I want to get clarification on this process, so, how do you get?
If you take the two that were, have the most number one priority, that would be Jerome and Mike.
So again, what were the tally of numbers using three, two, and one? Three for their first choice, two for their second choice, and one point for their third choice?
Mike had two people vote for him as number one.
No, can you just give us the tally, please?
That's two.
Well.
Six.
That's six, please, yes, thank you. So six for Mike Newman, but again, all of, all of the votes count for points, so there's two that voted for first, that's six points, but you have to tally all the points.
Through the chair, can I get a point of clarification?
Yes, please.
This was brought to us by the clerk, and it looks like we're making up a court, what was your, since you gave us the blanks, what was your numbering system going to be through the, I mean, because you're, it's your position, and we have two people counting it two different ways.
It's really the Chair's prerogative, in the, in the past, we've given, like, the top choice, like, tallied who had the most top choice, who had the most second choice, but it's really up to the Chair to determine that.
And I, okay.
The reverse calculation would have, with the most points being the winner, so to speak, we have Jerome with nine, Sarah with eight, Melanie with seven, Mike with six.
And that's every vote counting, whether it's a first, second, or a third vote?
Correct, with three votes for number one, two votes for number two, one vote for number three.
Well, look how closely everybody's ranked together, right? Nine, eight, seven, is that what I heard? Nine, eight, seven?
Six.
Six? I mean, that's really close, right? And the top vote getter was Jerome?
Jerome.
By one point only.
I make a motion, we appoint Jerome, our new Planning Commissioner.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to appoint Jerome as our at-large position, and we have not taken public comment.
Yeah, we did, didn't we?
Yes, we did, yes, we did, I'm sorry.
I want to.
Supervisor Wilson.
Okay, I, I'm just going to say this because we have two top vote getters, this, this particular methodology isn't really very scientific or very, so I'm going to just say, like, let's just, let's have a discussion about these two people, and pick one or the other and move forward, I think that's, that's pretty reasonable, it's a lean, it's been shown, so I'm happy to, I think, from this place forward, let's just like, go with that.
So we have a motion and a second, Mike, so are you requesting that that be pulled back?
Yes, I am requesting that that be pulled back, because I don't feel like that, I don't know for sure if this Board feels that way or not, and I would like to make sure that, that we have that feeling.
Appreciate that, so the top two vote getters were Jerome and Sarah?
Sarah.
And Sarah?
So you want to, like, give your, give, what are your?
So the motioner and the second, are you willing to pull back and have a discussion, or, I mean, I'm, I'm really looking at the time here, so.
If you actually think it's going to change, or are we just trying to make sure we don't hurt anybody's feelings? That's, that's what I'm trying to get at, because I hate to say, and I'm just going to say this, and I'm taking, I'm taking a shot here, that three people voted, because I heard three voted number one for Jerome, and two voted number one for, for Mike.
For Mike.
For Mike, so we've got, we've got our number ones all picked, and this is nothing against Sarah at all or anything else, but your number one choice, and now you're saying you want to go to your number two choice.
I'm not saying that.
Well, I'm just saying, but the discussion could actually, are we turning this into ranked choice or whatever?
We are, sorry, I mean, just a fact.
But I'm just saying.
I'm going to pull back my second.
So at this point, I'm going to recommend that we adjourn to our closed session, and that we come back and we consider where we're at with this, I want to double-check the numbers, because if three people voted for Jerome, that would be nine points, plus other points, you know, possibly, so. Anyway, I think at this point, we're getting a little contentious, and I think it's going to be best, and I was hoping to avoid that, that was my intention, and I understand the concerns on all. on all sides here. So let's adjourn to closed session. The estimate is that it will be probably about a half an hour, so we will be back here at about 11 o'clock, because after closed session, we're going to go ahead and take a quick break for the board, and we'll be back here at approximately 11 o'clock. And so could you please read the closed session item, County Council?
Thank you, Chairman Jerome. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9D1 in order to discuss existing litigation in the case of Elizabeth Schwab et al. versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201700.
Okay, thank you very much, and we'll be back at approximately 11 o'clock. Thank you.
on our closed session item.
Thank you, Chairman Jerome. With regard to Item L1, the board voted unanimously to authorize the risk manager to enter into agreements with Shook, Hardy, and Bacon for defense of the case of Elizabeth Schwab et al. versus County of Humboldt et al., Humboldt County Superior Court Case Number CV2201700.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, going back to pick up the item that we adjourned on earlier, there had been a motion and a second that was withdrawn. We did have a straw poll vote, and in the interest of full transparency, I'm going to ask that each board member read out for us who their top vote was, their second vote, and their third vote. And I'll go ahead and start that out. My top vote was for Jerome, my second choice was for Sarah, and my third choice was for Melanie. And then I will, I'll just go down the line here and ask each board member to tell us what their top vote, second vote, and third vote was. Supervisor Arroyo.
My top vote was Sarah West, second Jerome Curriazi, third Melanie McCover.
Thank you. And Supervisor Wilson?
My top vote was Jerome, then Sarah, and then Melanie.
And then Supervisor Bone?
Mike Newman was my first.
Is your bike up?
Newman was first, and Melanie was second, and Sarah was third, I think, I don't know.
That's what you got? Thank you very much, Supervisor Bone. And Supervisor Bushnell?
Mike, Sarah, Jerome.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so now that we have that transparency out of the way, it, when you add up those numbers, we've got 10 votes for Sarah, or 10 points for Sarah, nine points for Jerome, six points for Mike, and five points for Melanie, so we have two, two folks that seem to be getting most of the, the vote tally, so I'll bring it back to the board. What would your preference be at this point?
I'll just process. My preference would be just ask the board who the, of the two tops, who would they prefer, and then let's move from there.
Does that sound agreeable with the board? Your top two choices?
Your top one of the two.
Top, your top choice of those two people, Jerome or Sarah. So I'll again, I'll start at this end.
Yep, Sarah.
Okay, so we got one for Sarah, okay, and Supervisor Bone?
Sarah.
And myself would be Sarah. And Supervisor Wilson?
Jerome.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Sarah.
Okay, so we got four votes for Sarah, one vote for Jerome, so could we have a motion?
I make a motion, we appoint Sarah as our at-large planning commissioner.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to appoint Sarah as our at-large planning commissioner, and I'll go to public comment in the Zoom.
We did.
We did. I'm just thinking that because this was an action that we now took differently than what we're talking, I don't.
It was taken before we did.
Okay, okay, I'll take the advice of the board as a whole. So come back to comment at the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So I just want to really thank all the applicants again, and really, I want to state that my ranking was based on the recusals that have had to happen, and that I, once again, am so appreciative of all the applications.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
I want to thank Kurt D'Amico and the staff for bringing what should have been something very easy until everybody wanted to change the scoring and everything else. So the only thing I request is that the scorings are written down in the next, when this comes up, in two years, three years, and everything else, which I, which will be fine, so we're not changing up here as we go to the, whichever way the wind's blowing.
Thank you, and I'll take the burden of responsibility for that as chair. That's my faux pas for having shifted our process. But here we are, and any final comments from Supervisor Wilson?
I want to thank all the applicants, all the people who've done this before, and I want to still encourage people to put in applications even when there's not openings, because you never know what happens, you never, and not only that, it's just when an opening comes up, you may not hear about it at the time, and so just put it in now if you're interested in any of the committees that we have at the county planning commission or anything else, put in your application.
Great. Any other final comments? And I'll just say that I apologize to my board for having made this a lot more complicated than it probably needed to be, so lessons learned, thank you for your indulgence. All right, at this point, let's have the vote on the motion and the second.
Is your?
Yes, the vote tabs. Everybody have theirs up?
Yep.
And there we go.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the work of the board and of all the applicants and the planning commission. Congratulations, Sarah. You got your work cut out for you.
It might be, yeah.
Right, is it condolences, congratulations? It's a C-word, for sure. And I believe staff have your packet to get started for the commission meeting already. You'll need the time to prepare, so thank you. Okay, moving on, we have item number I2, form an ad hoc committee regarding the Department of Health and Human Services relations with Big Lagoon Ranteria, Blue Lake Ranteria, Bear River Band of Ronerville, Cherry Heights Indian Community of the Trinidad Ranteria, Hoopa Valley Tribe, Karuk Tribe, Urok Tribe, and, our apologies, we forgot to include the Wiat tribe, but Connie Beck is here to speak to that.
That's correct. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. Due to a clerical error, we missed one of our local tribes. My apologies for that error, and so we need to add to this agenda the Wiat tribe.
Thank you for that modification. Very much appreciate that. Okay, so any questions or clarifications from the board in regards to this item? Supervisor Bushnell?
I wanted to thank you through the chair. Director Beck, I'm wondering if you can kind of just say what the role of the ad hoc would be?
Very good.
The role is to meet with our local tribes when they are feeling like they need government to government consultation. We meet, our, our staff in child welfare and other areas of DHHS meet with the tribes on a regular basis, and sometimes we have disagreements, or they have worries about some of the work that we do, and for that, they'd like to have those government-to-government consultations.
Keep going, please.
So thank you for that. I, I would like a little clarification if I could. Usually, an ad hoc is for a specific task, and that task gets done, and then the ad hoc dissolves. And so maybe I'm going to ask council, is this, can I, is this appropriate for that role?
I believe that it is. The, the ad hoc should be for a set duration. It should not be indefinite by any means. It should be for a, a short period.
So thank you for that clarification, then maybe could we set the duration of what you anticipate, how long this will be?
I, I think, if I understand correctly from council, it's a six-month duration.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, and I know we do have one request already for G2G, and so we'll be moving forward on that after we get this item completed. And I assume that if we do have other requests for G2G down the road, then the ad hoc could be reformed, or if it turns out to be consistently happening thing, we'd have to create a standing committee. Is that correct?
Well, it depends on the certain circumstances that lead to it becoming a consistent issue, as you stated. So it could be, it could be something that leads to a standing committee, if necessary. It could also be a, an ad hoc committee for a, a limited duration to address the needs that come up during that, that time period, and then it can be, if there are still issues that need to be resolved, the, the question as to whether or not there needs to be a standing committee can be addressed at that time.
And the difference is that a standing committee would be subject to the Brown Act and have to advertise the meetings and have them open, but one of the important elements of G2G is that there's confidentiality often involved in those discussions. So it creates kind of an interesting little wiggle, shall we say, there, right? Thank you. Okay. All right, with that, any other clarifications or questions from the board before we get public comment? Seeing none, we'll go to the Zoom. I believe there is no hands up at this time, and so we'll see if there's anybody here in the audience today who would like to come forward and offer public comment on this agenda item. And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. I will say that with eight of the nine tribes in my district, I would like to volunteer to be part of the ad hoc, but we want two people, I believe. Is that correct? Okay, Supervisor Arroyo?
I'm willing to serve on this committee as well. Just wanted to put my name forward as a potential member.
I'll make the motion that we go with staff recommendation with, unless.
Before we do the motion, I'd like to see if there's any other discussion from the board. Thank you. Anybody else from the board would like to?
Yeah, I've been serving, doing this for a few years with Trinidad and DHHS already. I've got a pretty good working relationship with a few of the tribes, so I'd throw my name in, but again, I can count.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. It's okay.
I was just, in my mind, I was, I didn't, I didn't really.
Let's let it be. Okay, anybody else have any other comment here on the board? Okay, Supervisor Arroyo?
I.
She's got a comment.
I just, I'm happy to serve in this capacity. I think, you know, a lot of us are very overtaxed, so I assume that this, well, I don't want to make any assumptions, but I, I wanted to kind of indicate, or note that this may, this is going to be as, as needed, right? This is not going to be, as an ad hoc, there's no standing day in time.
Correct.
So it'll be a coordination effort between, between the members. So, you know, I know if Supervisor Bone has, you know, more experience working with DHHS certainly than I do, I'm certainly willing to step aside if you'd like to, to lead, but I do think that I have positive relationships with a lot of the tribes in our region and would look forward to building those two.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone.
I'll withdraw. I just.
Okay, we're both withdrawing now. You sure? Because I heard Supervisor Arroyo saying that she was willing to step aside.
But she has to.
She said she was willing to step aside. I take her for.
Can I make a motion, please?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we appoint Supervisor Madrona and Supervisor Bone.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Good. Thank you very much, and appreciate everybody's consideration. Okay, we are moving right along now, and it is 11:15, and the next item on the agenda is the, as I said earlier at the beginning of the meeting, we have moved the cannabis reform initiative to the end of the agenda, and at this point, it will be this afternoon after 1 o'clock. That's the best we can say at this point. We'll see how these two items go, and I'll give an update again just before we adjourn for lunch. So we're going to Item J1, which is the General Plan Amendment, Zone Reclassification, Lot Line Adjustment, and Conditional Use Permit Hearing for the Lucas and Myrtle Mini Storage Center by the J&amp;J Family LLC. And yes, please read into the record the ordinance. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Just for our people on Zoom, can you clarify when lunch will be?
It looks like lunch will be during the noon hour approximately at this point.
So at the conclusion of this item?
Depends on how quickly this item goes. If it goes quickly, we might jump into the next item.
We'll do a hour lunch, so.
Okay, trying to wrap up the meeting sooner than later. I appreciate that. Okay, I'll do what I can to consider that, and I know another board member has to leave by four as well, so we've got a couple of time constraints on it, so with the board's assistance, we'll move right through all these things. So Director Ford?
Thank you, Chairman Jerome.
I'm sorry, County Council.
Currently before the board is an ordinance amending Section 311-7 of the Humboldt County Code by rezoning property in the Myrtletown area, PLN-2020-16400, J&amp;J Family LLC.
Thank you, council. Director Ford?
Thank you, Chairman Madrona. Good morning. John Ford and Jacob Dunn with Cliff Johnson to present this item, which was continued from the board's hearing on January 10, 2023. At that time, the board considered the request to rezone, change the general plan amendment or general plan, and approve a conditional use permit to allow a mini storage. The board was concerned that perhaps the site was suited to allowing multiple family residential, and continued the item to allow staff to explore options to create the opportunity for residential to be constructed here if that was ever desired. So what we're bringing back to you is simply an overlay zone that would modify the underlying C1 zone. The C, this particular C1 zone is in an area that has a residential overlay on it also, so that residences are allowed on the second floor as a principally permitted use. The Q zone would allow residences to be permitted on the first or second floor if that was ever desired. So with that, it really is staff's recommendation to approve the application as applied for with the addition of the Q zone. We do have a longer presentation we can give, but we will do whatever you would prefer.
And we got that presentation last time for the most part, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Does the board feel the need for the longer presentation?
I don't feel the need for a longer presentation, but I would like a map up on the screen of where the project is located.
Perfect.
I'm attempting to screen share on the laptop here, so if we can get that shared. It might just be taking a bit to load, but it shows up on the laptop here.
This is what I'm seeing.
Yeah.
Let me see here.
I have six on the agenda. I have a map.
So.
I can.
We're working to get the map up on the screen.
Trying to stay consistent by having my mic on. So we'll take any questions or clarifications at this point, and then we'll go to public comment and bring it back for discussion at the board. Yes, question Supervisor Wilson.
There's a question for John or staff. The addition of the, of the Q zone, what's the, it, assuming there was bill, assuming that an owner of the property or this owner was to take advantage of that to actually create housing, what, how many units do you think would, would be possible on the, on that particular piece of property?
We did not set a limit on that. So it could range from anything from a single-family residence to a multifamily.
Okay. So like potentially dozens of units or a dozen?
Well, it's.
Three acres?
Two. Yeah. So probably up to about 30 units.
Up to 30 units?
Yeah.
So that's a pretty significant entitlement change.
Yes.
Which would have value.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. When we come back, I'm ready to.
Okay. I'd like the one-word answers. Director Ford, thank you. Anybody else at the board with questions or clarifications?
No, I think, I, I want to applaud the applicant for making the changes and working with planning and building to satisfy the needs of the housing. I just wanted, I wanted to say it last time and I'll say it this time. This, I can personally tell you this lot has sat empty for 65 years, except for a couple of horses and a mule when Ford's had it. I know the Pays have had it quite a while. But the other thing is, is I, I know we tend to turn up our noses at mini storages, but as, as we push for infill and multi-story housing units, it's a little hard for us up here that who all live in single-family homes and, and larger pieces of property to ask people where they're going to put their kayak, where they're going to put their, you know, their paddleboard, their bicycle. I guess we could have bicycle lockers, but that's only good for one or two bikes. They need to store their stuff and they can't do it in a 900-foot apartment. So if we're going to try to tell these folks that they, you know, or try to tell people more affordable housing will be in high infill apartments, which I see the, the trend going, allowing them to have some of the creature features that everybody that lives in a single-family house has while having a smaller footprint, I think is perfectly acceptable. And knowing that this applicant has 250, 300 rentals, if he thinks there is a need and, and he can get a return on his investment, I'm sure that he'll put mini storages below and apartments on top like we see in a lot of places. But I think he'll do what's, you know, good for the, the economy itself and the people that will rent them.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing no other questions or clarifications and we'll have more discussion, I'm sure. Let's go to the public. Going to the Zoom, I see one hand up, 5603. This is your chance for a public comment. Star six to unmute. There you go. Three minutes.
Good morning Dan. This is Colin Fisk with CRTP, the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. We appreciate that staff have come forward with a way to allow residential development on this property in the future. But we do continue to have concerns about the proliferation of personal storage facilities in our established communities. I think it's important to point out that facilities like these don't generate many daily trips and they do take up a lot of space. So it's much less important that they be centrally located when compared to uses like housing or other types of commercial facilities. And the space that they're taking up is valuable and could be devoted to housing or mixed-use development in a way that would address both the housing shortage and the climate crisis by allowing the creation of more walkable and transit-oriented communities. So we want to encourage you to work towards a long-term policy solution that limits or discourages development of personal storage facilities, particularly in areas that could be the focus of productive infill housing and mixed-use development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other hands up in Zoom, we'll come back here to the in-house. Anybody here today who would like to come up and make a public comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Did you have something, Director Ford, you wanted to add?
Is, maybe I'm confusing the board's rules with the planning commission's rules, but normally there's an intentional effort to.
Yes.
Ask the applicant to, to speak.
Yeah, I agree. So if the applicant would like to come up and discuss the project with us, please do so. And they did at the last meeting and appreciated your comments. So not seeing any interest in doing that at this point, but thank you Director Ford for bringing that forward. So back to the board Supervisor Wilson.
Okay. So I, and I want to first appreciate the board in allowing this to these modifications, this modification specifically around the housing opportunity for the Q zone to come back to us. And I thank, I thank the board for that. And I want to thank staff for that. And I, and I want to thank the applicant for allowing that to happen. And I want a reminder that, that it, that it was a no cost except for time and kind of pain in the butt to the step, to the, to the applicant and to, to staff. But there was, there was no cost of staff time to grant or well, at least propose this increased entitlement, which is a pretty substantial value to the property. We, we asked that it not be charged to, to the applicant, right? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That doesn't mean there wasn't a cost.
Okay. Well, all right. I appreciate that. So that being said, this is a conditional use permit. It's a conditional use permit for a couple of reasons. One is the actual use itself, which is a mini storage, you know, because we're being asked as a community whether it's properly cited, whether it fits into the community. It's a conditional use permit, but also because it's rezoning, it's 9,000 square feet out of R4, which is residential. So we're used, you know, we had the potential of losing residential zoning from this. So there, there is that. So this is a conditional use permit. So we make a decision as to whether or not this project is good for this community and for this neighborhood. And I'm, I'm still of the mind that, that a mini storage in this location is on balance, not beneficial as what's proposed with the Q zone with relationship to, to housing. It is, it produces virtually no real sales tax and no, you know, other than, other than property tax. It really doesn't produce a lot of value with relationship to the community, doesn't offer a lot of services. It's, it's in a zone, it's in an area that has commercial businesses and is joined with a lot of residential uses. And so for my, and also it's on a bus line. It's close to, you know, we have, we have businesses in that space that are, that are coming up and growing. We have a new cider place. There's, there's the store nearby. There's, you know, there's, there's stuff happening. And this will not necessarily be beneficial, I think, to, to, you know, to the other businesses in general as much as what we could have. And, and I'll say again, it's a conditional use permit. So from the economic development findings, I disagree with those findings. I think that those findings are, are not, are not appropriate. So from that perspective, I do like the Q zone very much. If it was up to me and, and, and I thought there was support for it, I would propose that we approve the Q zone, deny the project, but approve the Q zone. Because ultimately, I know that there is concerns that the applicant has gone through some time and some investment to get to this point. But the Q zone in and of itself is a pretty significant value to, to add. And even if they want, even if someone wanted to add that entitlement, which is allowing for this density of, of residential development, they would probably have to go through this similar process and, and cost. And so that's where I stand on this project. I would prefer that we approve the Q zone and deny the, the, the mini storage application. I also feel like it doesn't really, didn't go through any sort of design review that was of significance. I don't, you know, they're just the, I just don't think it is a net benefit to this particular neighborhood. And that's just my thoughts. Thanks.
Thank you. And I've got Supervisor Bone and then Supervisor O'Royall.
And I could almost agree with some of that. If there wasn't too many storages within a half mile of this that I think exceed the storage units that are proposed here. I hear, I, I heard it three times that are we enhancing this person's property values? And I think that's what we do with economic development. I think that's what we do with tourism. We want to make sure the hotels, restaurants and everything else get more money. So we enhance their economic benefits too. So if we can do something as government that we charge these people for taxes for and things like that to enhance their area and their properties, even if it's one at a time and that's, you know, we take those bites out of the apple. I think we're going to be fine. Since August 1st, we've only issued 32 single-family home permits. So we're just doing a little over one a week. So later on down the line today, we're going to be able to calm a lot of our nerves by a, by a project that's coming through that has 300-plus housing units that, that has been whittled down quite a bit from 335 single-family homes. So like, there's going to be homes coming and I think there's going to be more locations. And this is surrounded, this to the west has a commercial building. To the north, it has a commercial building. And then it has across the street, I think there's still a rest home across the street from this, Gold, Goldie's old rest homes. So there is a lot of commercial business surrounding this as, as we go forward. And I'll go back to, I've had people ask me, they can't find places to put their paddleboards, kayaks and everything else because they do live in confined housing apartments, you know, without yards, without garages, without the storage that they, you know, would like to have. So I, this, and again, this property has sat for 70, 80, 90 years empty already. So it, we're actually going to see some economic development, sales tax on the people that, and a lot of these units will be, there will be larger units that will be rented by one-man, two-man plumber outfits that need to store their locations. There will be commercial businesses working out this. A lot of them, no. It'll be, a lot of them will be silly people doing their Christmas lights. But the overall, we're not changing the fabric of the neighborhood that much because it's, the only thing it's had on now for the last year or two is a pile of grindings. But as we move forward, I think, and I think we made a change on the fencing to be more decorative fencing, wasn't there John? Or am I, was I mistaken? We talked about the fencing around it also.
That was discussed.
Yeah. So I mean, and I, I think knowing the applicant, knowing he doesn't usually build things of, of a bad nature, I think it will be aesthetically pleasing. But like I said, there's already too many storage units within a half mile of this on the same street. So we're not changing the fabric that much.
Thank you. And Supervisor O'Royall?
So first I want to acknowledge that that's a very good point. Supervisor Bone, around the storage of people's personal property who live in, you know, more compact housing. I've had a few residents from the neighborhood reach out and say, you know, that frankly, they think mini storage is ugly and they, they don't, you know, want there to be yet another mini storage facility in the neighborhood. So recognizing that there are already a few, you know, and, and not wanting to see the proliferation of that in the neighborhood, you know, not feeling like it adds much to the neighborhood that's of value to them. Granted, you know, they, they wouldn't, you know, it sounds like they wouldn't be using these services. I'm torn on this one. I am very interested in seeing something come forward to, I mean, this isn't the kind of, this isn't the kind of development that I think is, is great in neighborhoods. And I concur with the public commenter who said that often it's few trips and these can be located further away from our, our core, which, you know, all along Myrtle Ave really is the, the core of what is still developable in the greater Eureka area. And so I find it, I definitely have some heartburn around this one. And I also have a desire to kind of, to appreciate that people have gone through the process that we currently have in place. And I, I do tend to want to respect that. And so I'll be interested to hear what the board, you know, other board members think about this matter because it's not, you know, it's not my dream of, of the type of development that we want to encourage. And I hope that at least we can come back with something that, for the restricts where these types of developments happen. Looks like we have other comments, so I'll hold back for now.
Supervisor Bushnell and then Supervisor Wilson.
Thank you through the chair. So I, you know, when we had this discussion before at the board level, we asked for the applicant and Director Ford to come back with an overlay so that it, housing could happen and that, that he's, they've done that. And so I, I'm supportive of the project as that I feel the applicant has made good accommodations, has done what our board requested a few weeks, or what was it, a month ago? And so, you know, I, I, I do understand that many storages are, you know, they're not the, the, they don't look as a house does, but they can be spiffed up a lot. And I've seen some really pretty ones where they've done the, you know, design and, and done that. So I think that there, there is benefit. I also know that every mini storage in Humboldt County, almost every single one is full. And so the need is there. And so I am, I am in favor of what, what our, our department has done and what the applicant has done and, you know, at the request of this board.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Let's see here. A couple things. I have a question, John. In your experience, is having mini storages in commercial zones, like what is the, in other communities, is that, is that a normal thing?
Traditionally, they're either found in like office warehouse zones or in light industrial or heavy industrial zones, rarely in neighborhood commercial or what we call general commercial, C2.
So I mean, just going to say like, we're an outlier in having this even be conditionally appropriate in a resident, you know, in a commercial residential area. I'm just saying that's like, most counties don't do that. They don't do it for the reasons that we're talking about here, why we would even consider not having this in this location. There's a reason why it's conditionally permitted is because, does it meet conditions that we would see as appropriate? And so we have to make a discretionary decision upon, with this group of people, not whether or not the, what the process was, not necessarily whether or not it's, you know, the investment of the, of the person or the, or the, the condition of the site as not being developed currently. of the person or the, or the condition of the site as not being developed currently is, what's the long-term trajectory for this community? That's what planning is about. And from my perspective, if you already have a few of them in the neighborhood already, for me, that's not a good reason to keep moving in the direction of, of a, of this sort of inappropriate land use for this location. So for that reason, I'll, I'm going to stick with my, my position on this and take a shot at it. I'll make a motion that we approve the Q Zone and deny the project. Is that, can we do that?
If you could do that, it would be, if you're going to do, if you're going to do that, it would be better to modify the resolution, to change the findings, to articulate the reasons why the CUP is not being approved.
Okay. I'd be happy to do that, but only if I get a second for that, for that motion. If I don't, then I'm not going to bother, but I could definitely formulate that.
I have a question.
So, real quick, let's just see if there's a second to deny the project and approve the Q Zone. Seeing none, bring it back to the board.
I have a question.
Okay. Fair enough. Any, let's see, I had Supervisor Bushnell next on my queue.
I'm going to make a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay. And is there a second for that?
There is a second. And thanks for staff for bringing back what we asked for at the last meeting.
Thank you. And I guess I'll just chime in here. I do appreciate that we're adding the Q Zone so that the applicant could potentially build housing. It may not be now, maybe it'll be the kids 20 years from now, but it's nice to have that option. It does give the landowner a lot of good options. I do think that, given its location, it would be perhaps good to have a condition of decorative fencing with some landscaping around the perimeter. So it's not, not, you know, to help soften the whole thing. And I noticed in Arcata, with a lot of the mini storages, they do beautiful murals. If you happen to have a really big wall, I'm not going to make it a condition. I don't, I can't even do that on my own anyway. But sometimes the murals can help make them at least blend in a little bit better. But I'm just wondering if we could consider adding decorative fencing and landscaping around the perimeter? We could add that condition if the board wanted, is that correct?
So it would be a little bit.
Well, first I want to see what's required already.
So currently, there is landscaping around the perimeter.
Okay.
And the fencing is wrought iron.
Okay.
All right. Well, I'll withdraw my request. I think those are both good considerations. Supervisor Arroyo?
I don't want to, you know, make the applicant feel pressured to come up, but I saw that there was some conversation in the audience about it. So I do recall seeing the decorative, or the fencing and the landscaping and the conceptual designs. So just, if there's, you know, those are in our packet, but they're a little bit buried in there. But I don't know if there's any desire to expand upon that any further by the applicant.
Did the applicant want to expand on that at all? Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Pat McDonald with Pacific Builders. In our process of turning in what the planning department wanted, one of the things was, they wanted to have an elevation of what we thought would, this thing would look like. And we were very specific on what we thought it was going to look like. And we put the wrought iron fence around the project, and this was done quite a long time ago. They, we didn't know how the project was going to end up, but we knew what we wanted as far as two stories and laid it out. And we showed to have a wrought iron fence around the project because we wanted a nice-looking project. And we wanted landscaping on the edge of the, between the fencing and the buildings so that would show Myrtle Avenue and Lucas Street. So they're not just looking at a building, they're looking at a nice-looking building with landscaping. And so that has been turned in.
Great. Thank you. I see some nice big walls there. I'm seeing some really beautiful murals, but not a requirement, just, you know, Eureka's, our community is well-known for doing really beautiful murals.
We, I think you're going to be very happy with this project when we're done with it. Jim has gone to a lot of effort in making it a nice-looking project.
Okay.
And that's what we plan on doing. And we spoke to the neighbors and told them what we were doing. I think Jim walked around with the elevation and they liked it. You know, they, they liked the idea that they don't have a drop curve on Myrtle Avenue. That drop curve is on Lucas Street to keep the, you know, to make it flow a lot better on Myrtle Ave.
Yep.
So anyway, you're going to end up with a nice project when we're done.
Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
John, I mean, could this board direct potentially to have staff come back to amend our code so that we don't have mini storage as listed as a conditionally use, as a conditional use permit in our commercial zones?
Yes.
So then we wouldn't have to talk about this again because I, I'm just kind of wondering. And it would be standard, I mean, it's pretty standard through a lot of communities not to have that. So I'm just, does the board have appetite to see that amendment in our land use code in the future?
I'll go back to the motioner in a second.
No, not at this time. I think it's a different discussion and I want, I would like to get clarification before I do that. Humboldt County is, you know, it's for the rural areas and so, and incorporated areas. So I would like to have further discussion before I would do that.
Maybe clarify, would the board be interested in having that discussion in the future?
Yes.
I would entertain that.
Yeah. Okay. And John, I'm assuming there may be other things on your plate in terms of consideration of other possible changes. Are you making a laundry list, so to speak? Should you go along? Or is this an outlier?
This, this is a bit of an outlier, but it is something that actually wouldn't require too much work from a staff, staff perspective because it's really mostly about doing a strikeout if that's where the board wanted to go.
Okay. Supervisor Bone and then back to Wilson?
If, if what's stated, if most other cities are doing this and counties are doing this, can we just kind of look at what they're doing and see, ask, and see if they're actually doing it and working? Because we always hear, everybody else is doing it, we're the outlier. And then we find out we're not the only one, you know, allowing, so.
If that's a question, I could offer, one of the things that we could do is do a survey of other communities, determine what's normal and bring back a report on that.
Okay. Do we need to have board direction for that? Or are you hearing the direction?
I'm hearing the direction.
Okay. Good enough. Supervisor Arroyo and then Supervisor Bushnell?
I just have a question, and this may be, I apologize, but I'm just now looking at the difference between the two wetland maps that were provided, the applicant provided in the Attachment 7, which is the IS and MND report, a screenshot of the national wetlands inventory, and then the outlined area where the project is proposed, which makes it look like the wetland impacts are much further away from where the project's proposed than the wetland delineation report maps do, which is Attachment 6B. And so I guess I came to this conversation thinking about like, how much of the rest of the parcel is buildable? And then looked at the wetland delineation report, which made me think that the rest of it is not very buildable, given that. But our staff prepared to kind of speak to how much of the rest of the property is buildable.
So one of the dangers of the NWI later through the chair, pardon me, is that it gives a very broad stroke of where wetlands need to be looked for, where an analysis needs to be done. They are not a representation of where wetlands absolutely exist and the extent of the wetlands. So in this particular case, there was a wetlands analysis that was done onsite, site-specific wetland analysis that included the property just to the south.
So essentially, this means that the buildable portion of the project will be taken up by this, by this development that we see here today.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the property of the south, that's ours, right? Lucas Street, county property?
That is correct.
Which is basically a large gulch with a wonderful forest on it. So, okay.
Any other questions? Supervisor Bushnell? No, you're good? Okay. We've taken public comment, we've had good discussion, we've got a motion and a second. So we'll go to our voting tabs.
Chairman Drone, I didn't get your vote.
I clicked yes.
Now, now it came over. Thank you. Motion passes four to one.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody, and look forward to seeing a beautiful development out there. Okay. So we're moving, it is now seven minutes till noon, but we have two large items left on our agenda. The next one would be the McKay, North McKay Ranch subdivision project. I think we'll go ahead and take that. It might even take us till 12:30 or something. We'll see how the discussion goes. This is another project that's being brought back to us. And so let's go ahead and jump into that. And with that, that will basically just leave the one item, the cannabis initiative, to take up after lunch. So we'll, yes, please.
Thank you. Through the chair. So after lunch, can you try to just, there are people waiting, just kind of put a time out there?
I think we'll be able to do that as soon as we finish this item. And we're going to do a half hour lunch today because we have two board members that need to leave this afternoon. One of them's going to be driving on the snowy road, so I've been asked to consider trying to move the meeting along.
So we're anticipating 1:15 probably?
Yeah, something like that. My sense is we might be able to get through this by 12:30, 12:45 at the latest, and then we'll take lunch back by 1:15 or so. But we'll revisit that when we finish this item. And whenever you're ready, Director Ford. Oh, I'm sorry. First, County Council, please read the, the item into the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Drone. Currently before the board is an ordinance amending section 311-7 of the Humboldt County Code by rezoning property in the Cutton area, PLN-9902-GPA Fairhaven Cottages LLC. Also before the board is an ordinance approving the development agreement between Kramer Properties, Inc. and the County of Humboldt, PLN-9902-GPA North McKay Ranch subdivision project.
Thank you, Council, and Director Ford.
Thank you, Chairman Drone. This is a application that the board has seen before. The board did consider this item and continued it to allow the staff to basically modify the findings and the conditions. The two conditions that the board requested modifications to were conditions requiring installation of traffic signals. The board asked that staff develop language to support that in both the findings and the condition to allow as an alternative that bicycle pedestrian facilities in equivalent measure be allowed or be constructed as part of the project instead of the traffic signals. That work has been done. Those conditions have been modified. The findings have been modified to reflect that as appropriate. Upon the continuance, we were contacted by interest groups that expressed concern with the board potentially approving this without implementing mitigation that required the development to be fully electric. With that, we engaged in discussions with the interest groups and also with the applicant and tried to see if there were suitable alternative designs, actions that could be taken that would satisfy all parties. Ultimately, it got to the point where the applicant agreed that modifying the EIR, modifying the mitigation measure to require that the site be prohibited from installing gas and be all-electric was the prudent approach. And so we've also modified the final EIR, modified the mitigation measure to require that. That is what is back before you today. We've given the board what was requested relative to the transportation improvements and also modified the EIR to address the electrification of the site. We can give a more detailed presentation if you would like, but those, those really are the high points.
Does the board need a more detailed presentation? Supervisor Bone had his hand up first, then Supervisor Arroyo and?
And I, I want to thank the applicant and the board. We sent you back with two tasks, so this would make this project more palatable and it sounds like you guys did a great job.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. Since the transportation improvements were a new addition, could you, I'd love to hear about those and see those displayed. I don't have other questions about the project at this time, but I think that would be beneficial.
So what we're taking the transportation improvements to be is direction to begin meeting with the City of Eureka to identify improvements that would be appropriate for this location. And I think Public Works can go into more detail if you prefer, but we recognize that there is not a specific project that's in place right now. And that's something that really needs to be identified before the applicant begins or gets ready to install the improvements or is required to install the improvements. And I will say, that is a process that will be done in public.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there were drafts at this time yet. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Bone?
And John, putting it all in perspective, if we vote positive today, there will not be any dirt turned for six to 10 years. We'll give it a big venue, at least, at least six, possibly up to 10. Because I'm, I'm hearing that to power the facility is probably going to take six to eight itself. Is that, is that a fair assumption?
I'm not sure that that's entirely true. There does need to be some improvements that have not been completely defined in order to provide power to the site. There also are some off-site utility improvements that need to be made. And those are things that, with some of the tax revenue dollars that we get for housing, that we want to explore to see if that's something the county can participate in, in order to facilitate the development of housing.
And looking at the maps and everything else and having actually, with no financial benefit whatsoever, financial negativity, there will be trails connectivity from the parking lot from Redwood Fields, being able to, to, to basically go on the whole McKay Track Trail subdivision from there. So that's actually going to be a certified, or it's, it's actually being now used as a parking lot, the same thing with North Ridge and out there on Myrtle Avenue, so, or Harris, excuse me. So, I mean, that's part of the plan to, is access from the Redwood Fields parking lot, right?
Not only from Redwood Fields parking lot, but from within the development itself.
And within the development.
Right.
So that's, that's, that's a major plus.
Okay. Thank you for that. And at this point, not seeing any other board input, let's go to the developer and give them a chance to speak if they would like. I see Kurt Kramer is on Zoom. So Mr. Kramer, if you would like to speak, just raise your hand, and I see you've unmuted. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. I really have nothing to add unless there's more public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's about as brief as it can be. So, under public comment, Nikki, do we have anybody?
Yes, Chair Madron, we have caller 5603.
Okay, great, 5603, star six to unmute, you've got three minutes. There you go.
Good afternoon, I guess, this is Colin Fisk with CRTP. I wanted to say that we greatly appreciate that the new supplement to the FEIR for this subdivision requires that all-electric development, and also appreciate the board's direction and the agreement to do some bike and pedestrian infrastructure improvements which are much needed in that area. And both of those projects, or those changes represent substantial improvements to the project, and I think bring it much closer to alignment with county and state policies, and also closer to compliance with CEQA. We do still have a couple of concerns with the supplement to the FEIR, particularly that it incorrectly argues that some of the additional transportation mitigation measures are either not feasible or not required because they don't reduce impactful of the significance threshold, which is not, not a, not a thing under CEQA. So I wanted to point out that, you know, one of the reasons the, the supplement argues that mitigation measures, transportation mitigation measures are not feasible, is because they would take place on City of Eureka jurisdiction, and as we just heard, the board is already directing staff to work with the City of Eureka on transportation improvements, and I think that that would be, I think that that demonstrates that mitigation measures in city jurisdiction can be feasible. Also wanted to point out that a number of important mitigation measures in the transportation realm, which are not currently included in the EIR, don't require any coordination and do appear to be quite feasible, including providing bus passes to residents of the future multifamily housing, reducing the number of parking spaces, and unbundling parking spaces from residential and commercial rents in order to remove the subsidy for personal driving. And so I would encourage you to just revisit this one item, the feasibility of transportation mitigation measures, and encourage and include additional feasible and required mitigation measures before approving the project. Thank you.
Thank you, and next we've got 3053, star six to unmute. There you go, you've got three minutes.
Good afternoon, it just turned afternoon, there's Thomas Holder here. Just, I heard some comments in the last call-in, and they actually encouraged me to raise my hand here, when they were talking about CEQA, because I, I'm pretty confused about this project. I believe it had an EIR, EIR that was certified, and there was overriding findings or something like that, I can't remember the exact terminology, and I don't have my notes, I'm driving down the road. But please remember that, maybe I'm wrong, I've been wrong before. It, it's really interesting hearing this, I think I heard that it went all PG&E, even though we don't necessarily have the infrastructure to do that, so instead of, what I'm hearing is instead of the potential to add to our housing numbers in a couple, within the next couple of years, now we have to wait six to 10 years, so, that's confusing. And then, the other thing is, it seems like sometimes we over-condition or over-analyze things, and we make things that are so great on paper, that feasibility, because of economic reasons, they can never be built. So it'd be really unfortunate if a project that went before the planning commission and met all of the ER, EIR requirements, CEQA requirements, and then come to the board, and, you know, there was some concerns, I do believe there was overriding findings, but it'd be really unfortunate if projects are, I, I can't think of the name, but it's basically would, we just can't develop it because it doesn't make economic feasibility, unless it's a government-funded project, which I don't believe this one is. And this is me speaking as an individual, myself, who I am, driving down the road. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and then we'll take public comment from those here in the room today, and seeing none stepping up, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you, through the chair, Director Ford, I'm wondering, for electrification, is there, I understand that the code changed January 1st, is that true?
The, the code did change not to complete electrification, it changed to require that certain things be done to demonstrate that the use of gas would be equal to the use of electricity. We expect in the next code change for the building code for it to go all-electric within two years.
Okay, so just to, I just wanted to clarify on that for my own peace of mind with that public comment. Thank you.
Supervisor Bone?
And these will all be required to have solar also, even the multi-unit facilities, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I'll make, take a shot at a motion to accept staff's recommendation with comments after I get a second.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, Supervisor Bone?
Well, and I, I'm probably a little more familiar with this than anybody, since I'm the one who actually brought it out of TPZ 30, 29 years ago. 29 years ago, there was, the map for it was 327 single-family homes. And then it was purchased, and then it was 76 single-family homes that actually still met our housing, but they couldn't get it approved. So then it's transpired through another owner. I don't know if this ever gets built privately, I actually see this maybe turning over to other agencies, educational institutions, or anything else to actually push it through. I, there's, there's going to be a lot of talk about traffic. There is a bus stop about 100 yards away from this, where the, the entrances are of this facility. There's a grocery store, there's pizza, there's a Mexican restaurant, a gas station. So there is, there is services available. I've lived out that way and been out that way, that general area, for 65 years, and still in that area. We added a traffic light, we're talking about traffic lights, took us 13 years to get the traffic light at Fern and, Fern and Walnut, and that's been a great safety factor, and without much problems. I look at Lumbar Hills, that was permitted for 284 homes in 1964, and they haven't built them all, there are still lots available. So I'm, I just, I just want people to know that you're not going to see 300 units, this is a 30-year build-out, and I don't think we're going to see more than 10 to 12 units a year, and by the time we've all gone off this board and everything else, it will probably be less than half. You know, and for full disclosure, I manage and run and have built a youth facility that is dead center, 11 acres in the middle of this. I'm not as excited as one may think, considering how much vandalism I get out there in the middle of nowhere, and I can't imagine adding all those families, which I think is great, but all those kids looking at that 11 acres going, why can't I climb that fence and play on that, or spray paint it or break it? But as we look forward, if we look over the last 40 years, is what has been built out there, I think Cutton has grown, you know, a lot since I've been around it. But we're finding out, you know, the transportation is there, I sometimes wonder if we talk about this, but we had no transportation in Samoa, and the Danko units are working out, HTA's done a great job on trying to fill that out. So, I think this is a great project, I think it was a good project 29, 30 years ago when it was brought forward. My focus 30 years ago wasn't the housing, I couldn't have cared less 30 years ago, I wanted to get a place for kids to play, and that's worked out very successful. And that will now be the centerpiece of, of the McKay cottages, or whatever we end up with. So, I, I think, I appreciate all the applicants that have been on this property, because they've included me on needs and things like that. So, it's, it's, it's a good project, it's going to meet a lot of our housing needs, and if we worry about where all our housing needs are going to do, again, we've had 32 single-family homes built since, or permits taken, they're not built, since the 1st of August, and we've had 30, and I think the planning, if, if they get an award for something in five years, we've had 30 permits taken out for ADUs. And if you go to our ADU site, I don't think there is a better one in this state. They, it is so open and letting people, so I'm telling people, go to your site if you think you have room for an ADU, it's not a bad idea. But I, I think this project is, it's a good project, but I don't, a lot of us will never see the build-out in our lifetimes, so, because it's going to take 30 years, I would imagine.
Thank you, any other comments from the board at this point? Yes, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff and the applicant for, and, you know, all the folks involved from getting, getting to the point where we are. I did appreciate the comments with relationship to, you know, other traffic and, and transportation potential mitigations that were put forth by Colin, but I think the needle has been moved pretty significantly in this, in this case, and I think that those are conversations we can carry forward. And I mean, I, and driving past that, or through that neighborhood, it's just, I think, last week, I feel like that, that concentration of development and people in that landscape will be really beneficial to that commercials, to that commercial area that's there, and I think that commercial area in and of itself has a lot of potential for, for, for growth, and, and actually even really, you know, pedestrian-oriented development within that zone to make it more attractive, so we can see more density and more use, and so that people do feel like they have a lot of options to walk to or to bike to in that, just, you know, stay in the neighborhood and enjoy. And so I'm, I'm hoping that it gets there, so I will be voting in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo?
I just wanted to express my appreciation to the applicant and to the staff for all of the work on this, and I am interested to hear, you know, I'm, I'm hearing that there, you know, may be less appetite to move forward with this project, since we have the developer on the, on the phone, I'd love to hear any thought, additional thoughts you might have about plans to proceed with this project. Of course, you know, it's not required that you comment on that, but I'd, I'd love to hear any thoughts you might have to share.
Mr. Kramer, would you like to make any comments?
I, you know, as a developer in this community for the last 40 years, I just continue to be amazed at the obstacles and hurdles that are put in front of, of development, the lack of planning in this area, and we've got, I mean, Rex is spot-on. If, if I could have built the project that we put forward over a year ago to you folks, it was still a difficult project. Now with the added requirement of all-electric, it's like, I don't know how this gets done, but we were 20 years in the permitting phase of this, or development, entitling phase of this project, and we had, in my mind, nothing, you know, to show for it. So it was very little effort to just get this, a year later, back in front of you folks to, to get us the approvals that we can now start trying to figure out if there's a way to do it. We, we have a Humboldt Community Services District that still has yet to bring this project into its sphere.
Sphere.
Sphere, well, it's in their sphere, but it's not, it's not in their district. And, and because nobody ever does these in Humboldt County, they're not really sure what to do, which, you know, is another trip down the consultant lane, and, and more money spent to get us to a point where we're actually in their district and in their sphere. The sewer system stopped somewhere around Sequoia Park, so there's a lot of off-site work that needs to be done, because there really hasn't been any meaningful development leading out to that area. We got traffic issues that this project can't burden. So, and, and now with the all-electric, you know, we just found PG&E pops up, you know, unbeknownst to us and says, you know, everything south of Fortuna isn't capable of handling any power requirements. Well, when's that happen in, in Humboldt County? I mean, in Eureka and, and Myrtletown? And it, it came out of nowhere, so, you know, we're, as a developer, you're sitting there going, geez, you know, is that a concrete step, or is that, is that laden with mud and water? How much risk is involved in this project? I would argue a ton. If I had to do it all over again, would I do it? Not a chance. You know, I'm certainly later in life now, and, and 20 years ago, I was 40. So you're, and we've effectively chased the development community out of Humboldt County. There's not very many builders around to build the housing that we claim to need, and I think we need it. But we continually get in the way of it, and we don't consult with the development community, we just start laying out these rules without really fully understanding the impacts. So, you know, we've got a 20-year development agreement around this project, and I think it's going to take every bit of it to see it done, and I think Rex was spot-on with Lumbar Hills, I think it wasn't as big as he suggested, but it's in the 200 range, and there's still a large phase that's yet to get developed, and they just asked for an additional 10, 15, or 20 years to see that one get developed. And I find it so ironic, because you run around and say we need housing, and this county needs housing, it needs housing to meet the needs of the hospital community, it needs housing to meet the needs of the new Cal Poly Humboldt community, it, it needs housing, and yet we continue to go in and micromanage how we're going to build it, and what's going to happen, and quite honestly, folks, I, I think we're going to wake up here and go, it's not going to, you know, we can't get that private housing. Public housing will happen, but it's a fraction, a mere fraction of what you need. So, am I negative on this? You bet. There's still a little bit of opportunity there, but I, you won't see a shovel turned out there for years. And, you know, I just don't know, I'm kind of over the, we need housing, but then find out we really don't want it, by means of all this regulatory process. And in fairness to the county, there's a ton of it still coming out of the state, with these energy code upgrades and everything else, and it's just going to paralyze the private side. And, you know, we say it, and everybody thinks, oh, those greedy developers are making too much money, and they're doing this, it's just not going to happen. So, that's my, you know, you asked me to open up, and I gave you my two cents' worth, but, you know, we've got a project in the old days that I would be very excited about getting to this point, you know, 10 years ago on a project like this, it'd be, you know, we're ready to go to, go to shovels next year, and that's just not the case anymore. And so we're trying to figure out now how to build the bridge, and John's been very helpful, John Ford, thank you, in, in supporting the project, completely aware of, of what the hurdles are and the obligations, and he sees the permit activity that, or the lack of permit activity that's happening in the county and the cities. And, you know, it, it should tell you a story that we want to go to work, we want to build homes, that's what I love to do, but we get caught in this, this period and process that we're in now, and, and quite honestly, I don't know how we, I don't know how we get out of it. But anyway, those are my comments, Natalie, and I appreciate you asking, and I think with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer, and, you know, I think you're right, there's a lot of state regulations coming down, but, you know, more and more of these projects may very well require public-private partnerships. You know, there may be a lot of elements that we're adding that make it less doable, but if we can bring in public resources to help with some of that, that might be a, a pathway forward, but it's new ground, right? And the good news is, the county, I think after, was it Article 25, is that correct? Once that went away, the county does have the ability to engage more directly with projects now, and I think that's, we haven't seen that really come to manifestation yet, but it may very well be that that's how these kinds of projects and others with these additional requirements get done. So I look forward to those discussions about how we create better public-private partnerships to, to do this, because as Mr. Kramer said, we all want to see this housing. The question is, how do we afford it, and how do we make it happen, and have these good things in the projects, so, without making it undoable, right? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I want to thank Supervisor Arroyo for asking Kurt that question, because I think the biggest thing, and I think John can attest to this, Kurt and his family has almost walked away from this project and thrown their hands in the air every time they're asked to throw another $100,000 for the consulting, $200,000 for the consulting. dollars for the consulting. And I hope everybody listened, what a frustration, frustrated applicant-developer-house builder. He started building houses, and if anybody remembers, he was building those nine hundred square-foot houses on little tiny lots, half-lots, all over Eureka for affordable housing forty years ago at twenty years old. And he made deals with the city and sold them for twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand, somewhere around there, fairly. And I saw one listed, and I sent him a picture the other day, one was listed for three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars, and I asked him why he hadn't held on to all of them. But he built what he built, and I've known Kurt fifty years, over fifty years, he built what he built by working within the system and everything else, and we sit up here as a system, maybe failing him, because we are not getting anybody in a position, if you guys look around at the developers in your area, the ones that retired, the ones that are not, are there any more subdivisions coming up, John, to speak of, private?
There's one that's been renewed.
Yeah, no, I'm.
Yeah, we, we're not, there's nothing of this scale coming through.
So we're, we're, we're coming through as one house, you know, a week, and that's just permits, that doesn't mean they're being built yet, so, I mean, and, and they're getting them, you know, through, but if we're, and the public-private sounds really good, but that triggers, that takes so much control away from the private developer-applicant-house-builder that, because I've, I've gone to Kurt three or four times and says, and John knows this, because I've said, is there a way we can do some of this infrastructure, get it back on tax money? Because we build six hundred thousand dollar apartments all the time. So is there a way we can do single-family homes and then get, get our money back up front? And there's, really isn't an avenue for that without triggering a lot of other things. So I, this is huge that he stayed with this. I, I don't know if he does it. I mean, he's got, he's got his son-in-law and his daughters that are involved to a certain extent, but, I mean, he may not want to do that to his family. So we need to look, I mean, we always talk about planning, we need to plan ahead, that's why we're up here, this is all about planning. We better plan that we have the availability to people to actually build what we're planning for. And I think our biggest thing is, is we need to talk to the, the builders as they're doing it, saying, hey, what, how, how can we help you, instead of saying, how can we restrict you anymore and cost you more money? And before you ever turn a shovel, you've got a two hundred thousand dollars into your project, and we're trying to build affordable housing. The only way any affordable housing is going to be built, it will not be built privately. Affordable housing, we built, we will be built by subsidized financing through us, and it's the idea of, the idea of homeownership and things like that that a lot of people are wanting, and you heard them say, all these facilities we're building is just a fraction of what we actually need. And single-family homes is, I think, what everybody strives for. You know, at a younger age, you rent what you can, and then, you know, if you're able to buy, you buy as soon as you can, so that's part of what our planning needs to be, too.
Thank you. Some weighty questions, no doubt. So, any final discussion? Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor, let's go ahead and vote on our vote tabs.
Thank you all, motion passes five-zero.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for that, and so here we are at twelve-twenty-five, so we'll take a lunch break till one o'clock. That's thirty-five minutes, and then come back, and we have one item left on the agenda, and that's the cannabis initiative. Supervisor Bushnell, before we adjourn.
I would like to ask Director Ford, there were some people in the audience about this initiative, did you tell them a time, or did you just say after lunch?
I, I told them about one o'clock.
About, okay.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, we're moving a lot faster than I think any of us might have predicted, so here we are. So we're adjourned until one o'clock for lunch. Adjourned. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We have one item left on our agenda, and that is the analysis and recommendations related to the Humboldt Cannabis Reform Initiative, and I believe we've got a presentation that John Ford and his staff are prepared to give us. No need to read anything here, right? Counsel? Yeah, I think we're good there. Okay.
Excuse me, I popped out at.
No worries, it was a brief lunch. I think half of us spent most of the time talking about other things, so.
I need to get back into Zoom real quick, so I can share my screen.
Okay. Looks like the word's getting out, we have fifteen attendees. Thank you Supervisor Bushnell for getting the word out to the communities, and Supervisor Bone and/or others who might have.
Well.
Thank you Chairman Medron.
You bet.
Thank you for the moment to get adjusted here. John Ford and Stephen Santos and Cliff Johnson with the Planning and Building Department to present the analysis and recommendations on the Humboldt Cannabis Reform Initiative. And did I stop sharing somewhere?
My apologies for the technical difficulty.
No worries. For those listening but can't view us, we are working through to get the PowerPoint up, our screen share.
Here we go. Thank you, my apologies. So we spent some time looking at the Humboldt Cannabis Reform Initiative, and this is just an overview of the report that we provided to you to identify the likely impacts from the regulatory changes. The primary concerns with this have to do with not so much what it will do to new applications, but what it ha, would have to do with existing permitted farms, and more specifically to regu, to legacy cultivators who have been in the cultivation business perhaps for generations. And so we're going to really focus this morning's discussion on what that does to the cultivation industry in Humboldt County. It's important to remember that part of the initiative is to talk about what large cultivators do to small cultivators in the county, but as we will point out, most of the so-called large cultivators are actually pre-existing legacy farmers that have been doing this for a long period of time. So if the HCRI passes, one of the most important things to talk about is that many of the farms will become what's called legal non-conforming. I want to spend a little bit of time giving a, perhaps a planning lesson, forgive me for that, but non-conforming is a very important concept in understanding the impact of the ordinance on existing permitted farms. What non-conforming means is that it's either a use or a structure that was in existence and legally permitted at some point in time, and then the regulations changed such that it no longer complies with the existing regulations that are in effect. What this typically does is it freezes the structure or use at a point in time such that it cannot change or can only marginally expand, but it basically can only be maintained. Sorry, my computer's having a hit. This is further complicated by a component of the HCRI which defines expansion, and one of the definition, one of the phrases in the definition is, any increase in the number or size of any structures used in connection with cultivation. So basically, a structure is anything that is placed upon the ground or has location on the ground, or is attached to something that has location on the ground. So it's virtually anything. And so the concern with that is that then, non-conforming would not allow any expansion of any structures, increase in number, so you couldn't add water tanks, you couldn't add solar facilities, you couldn't add anything that had to do with the cannabis activities on the site. The HCRI also prohibits cultivation of over ten thousand square feet. Evidently, anything over ten thousand square feet is considered to be a, a large cultivation site. It also prohibits indoor cultivation. It essentially prohibits mixed-light cultivation. It does allow artificial light over six watts, which is currently the state definition of mixed, mixed-light tier-one. It also has provisions that any permit that is approved under the HCRI would only allow one permit per person and one permit per parcel. We'll talk much more about that, because all these things, the importance of all these, is that these serve to create a baseline for determining existing permitted sites as non-conforming if they don't comply with this. And the last one is that it prohibits cultivation activities on less-than-a-category-four road. And so even a three-thousand-square-foot cultivation site that's on less-than-a-category-four road would become a non-conforming use, because it doesn't comply with the road requirement. So the, as I mentioned, the greatest impact would be on legacy farmers, and I just want to point out that seventy-four percent of the permits that we have, and this is in, in the report, are over, that are over ten thousand square feet, are legacy farmers, they're pre-existing. So basically, seventy-four percent of the approved permits that are over ten thousand square feet are given to people who are pre-existing. That means twenty-six percent are for new. So just right off the bat, a farm that is over ten thousand square feet becomes non-conforming because of its size. So the ability to add water tanks, the ability to modify activities, to add uses, add a farm tour to the list of permits that it has, would not be allowed. So the choice for a non-conforming use is, or a non-conforming activity or structure, is that these farmers may be put in a situation as the environment changes, and they may need to add water storage, as the industry changes, and they may need to do things differently, and if they need to make changes to their site, they would either have to choose to make do with what they have, to make no changes, to reduce the size of the cultivation to ten thousand square feet. If they're at ten thousand five hundred square feet, maybe that makes sense, if they comply with all the other regulations that are within the HCRI. But if they're closer to an acre, it may not make sense for them. So if making no changes doesn't work, if reducing the size doesn't work, the third option available to them is to, to cease the operation, to discontinue the activity. And, and unfortunately, that, that becomes part of the decision-making process that would be available to non-conforming farms under the HCRI. It's also important to identify that the same provisions apply to farms that are under ten thousand square feet. They may become non-conforming for different reasons. They may have some, they may be indoor cultivation, they may be mixed-light, they may have more than, than one permit per person, they may have one, more than one permit per parcel, and they may, in all likelihood, be on a category, a less-than-a-category-four road. Any of these would deem them non-conforming. And I want to point out that seventy percent of all the permits that are issued for farms that are less than ten thousand square feet are for legacy, pre-existing farms. So by and large, the largest percentage of the population, the largest percentage of farmers that are affected by this, these regulations, are people who were farming before legalization, who did exactly what the county asked them to do. They came out and declared themselves to be cannabis farmers, they gave us their names, their addresses, their phone numbers, and they applied for permits, and they've gone through the process. They've spent thousands and thousands of dollars of, of money to improve their property, to address conditions that the county's placed on them, and this would put them in a place where potentially they couldn't further modify their, their site, they couldn't acquire additional permits to keep up with the industry, and that they may be forced to make a decision to, to discontinue the activity. Another really important component of the HCRI is that it no longer uses the, it would change the county's current regulatory requirement to require an annual inspection. This last year, the county did inspect every single one of the permitted sites, and what this would do is, is change that requirement from an annual inspection to be a renewal. And what is involved in the renewal isn't entirely clear, and, and that is something that adds significant uncertainty to what is meant by renewal. It is clear that there is an application that's intended. In the language of the HCRI, it says an application for renewal. So there is an intent, that there is going to be an application there. So under the, today's context, one thousand twenty-seven active permits, there would be one thousand twenty-seven applications submitted annually for a renewal. The thing that's not clear about this is that what is the intended process for evaluation of a renewal? One of the things that's really important to consider is that the HCRI would require that all permits expire annually, and then the renewal needs to be processed. Normally, when you have an expiration provision within a regulation, you're considering that to no avail. You're starting all over and having complete discretion on that every time that that's done. In this particular case, there would be a thousand discretionary permits a year that the county would be confronted with. I just want to bring up that the approval process that the HCRI identifies is that anything three thousand square feet or less could be ministerial. Anything over three thousand square feet would be subject to a discretionary permit, which would, in, by the HCRI requirements, involve a public hearing. The HCRI also expands the noticing requirements, which would probably cost somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand dollars for additional noticing, between an additional posting in the paper and going out and placing notices in the area of the site, having to pay a staff person to, to drive to sites, post it, drive back. There's a lot of staff time there, there's a lot of cost in, in the paper, then there's the additional cost of doing nailing for not three hundred feet, we normally do five hundred feet, but to do a mile radius, so there's a lot more postage involved there also. So these renewals, just the cost of doing that would, would be, would, would be more expensive by approximately a thousand dollars. The other big concern is that there is a section in there saying that after the approval of the HCRI, no permit shall be issued that results in more than one active permit. So the question becomes, what is meant in this particular case by no approval? Then there's the additional cost of doing nailing for not 300 feet, we normally do 500 feet, but to do a mile radius. So there's a lot more postage involved there also. So these renewals, just the cost of doing that would be, would be more expensive by approximately $1,000. The other big concern is that there is a section in there saying that after the approval of the H C R I, no permit shall be issued that results in more than one active permit. So the question becomes, what is meant in this particular case by no approval? If you're talking about an approval, a renewal is an approval. So is the intent here that in the context of renewing the application, a site can't have more than one active permit, and an applicant can't have more than one active permit? In all honesty, it's not clear what's intended by this. It's an unclear provision within the initiative, and it makes it extremely difficult to implement and extremely problematic. Under worst-case scenario, what that would mean is that all the renewal people that have multiple permits would need to give up all but one. That would probably result in them, well, I can't speculate on what they would do. But it would be very difficult for them to completely change their business model. Under best of circumstances, it would mean that nobody would be able to apply for an additional permit. And that would include people who may want to have farm visits, have tours, do onsite processing, have a community resource facility. Those would not be allowed in addition to a cultivation permit. So what about new applications? There's a cap that's imposed by the H C R I that has already been exceeded. It may be that enough people decide to discontinue with the, their existing permits, that we get down below the number of that cap. But then, the question is, is between the additional regulatory requirements in the H C R I, the additional cost of the noticing and the limitation on 10,000 square feet, would anybody actually apply for a new permit? So what are the implications of all this? One clearly is that we could see farms shutting down just because they can't comply with the regulatory requirements that have been put in place. Another could be is that the environmental enhancements that have been required in many cases by the planning commission, in some cases by the board, couldn't be undertaken. It's ironic that yesterday, I signed, I think, 18 agreements to grant money to people who had been awarded D C C grant applications. Under this, if they had any provision that made them non-conforming, most all applications are non-conforming. If this was, if that were to occur during the period of time when the H C R I was effective, they would not be eligible to install those improvements. They could not install new water tanks, they could not install the solar facilities. So a lot of potential environmental enhancements would not be able to be installed. And then, you know, the big implication is that we believe that the county has been successful in allowing people to step into the legal market. Humboldt County has traditionally not been a legal market. And we can only speculate in terms of what people would do if their primary legal form of cultivation were to be taken away. So our primary recommendation is to form an ad hoc committee to meet with the initiative sponsors and see if there is an understanding, the recognition that perhaps, the way the H C R I has been structured does some things that are unintended, that it has consequence that are unintended consequences. And to see if there's other ways to address some of these concerns. If that proves to be ineffective, there are other alternatives that we would recommend the board consider, working on informing the public of the initiative's impacts, and also to perhaps develop a competing initiative. That concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you, Director Ford. So at this point, let's take questions and clarifications from the board, and then we'll go out to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. So are there any questions or clarification? Supervisor Bushnell, then Bone, and then Wilson.
Thank you. Through the chair, Director Ford, I'm wondering what, because there's two licenses involved, state and county, what would happen with a renewal of a county license that would be then inactive? What would happen with the state license?
So when a local permit is discontinued, or some change is made, we notify the state. In fact, that's a component of the H C R I also. That's something we already do. But as we notify the state of that status change. And the state conversely notifies us.
So if you have a long process for renewal, and let's just be honest here, it's been long for lots of people to get through that structure. What would happen to their state license when they currently don't hold a Humboldt County permit?
Well, I think that we would ask that we not, or we would work to make sure we're not in that circumstance. And unfortunately, one of the things I intended to say and didn't is that we would really have to so greatly increase our staff in order to accommodate just annual renewals, that there would be many, many more people just working on renewals. That would be an annual thing.
So the process for any staff time is passed to the cultivator?
That is correct.
Are there class four roads in Humboldt County that are county, that are there roads in Humboldt County that are Humboldt County roads that aren't class four?
Yes.
How do you fix that? Just, I'm just making a statement.
Yep, thank you.
So currently, there are many cultivation sites that are on leased properties. And also, on those leased properties, that owner of that property might have their own cultivation site. What does that do?
Well, regardless of who owns the property and who holds permits, there's a limitation to what can be on the site. So I don't think that that would change things. The bigger implications, frankly, are to those sites where we approved a permit for new cultivation, and then people moved R R Rs onto the property.
Okay. Okay, so currently also, I'm almost done, you guys, for right now. Currently, when you go through the planning commission and you either 2.0 and some of the 1.0s, you get a list of compliance things that you have to complete, sometimes two years, sometimes five years, sometimes, you know, whatever. It's always down the road. What would that do to that down-to-the-road process? So if you're approved by planning commission, and you are working on your compliance, and you have X, Y, and Z to complete, which may be a facility, a drying shed, a rain catchment pond, so forth and so on, and you're allowed to cultivate right now, if you complete these things, what does that do to this?
So there's a couple of different questions that I'm going to answer in there, and hopefully, I answer the one that you intended to ask. One is that there are provisional permits where we defer improvements for a period of time because the site was pre-existing and they're bringing it into compliance. This would not change that. That would still be the process that people are given, although we're getting to the place where most of that work should be done. Secondarily is that if there's an approved permit that allowed somebody to put up a drying shed, or put up some other kind of facility, that, and they vested their permit, so they started that activity even though maybe they haven't constructed the drying shed, that would still be allowed to go ahead because that's still part of an approved permit.
Okay, last question for right now. Lots of cultivators that are doing outdoor cultivation are now changing to do light deprivation, which is a more sought-after product. So if you have 23,000 square feet of pots, and you want to change to 23,000 square feet of greenhouse, would you be able to do that under this initiative?
Greenhouse is a structure.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Bone.
Well, this started out, and the process, the neighborhood process, and you and I were, and Supervisor Wilson, were at the original meeting up at Neeland School. You were there. Remember, that was one you couldn't make, and you said, "I better be there." So, and the process was, the one that they were upset was, I think it was an acre. And I think we settled on 10,000? Is that, what ended up being settled?
So under 2.0, an acre of cultivation can be approved with a special permit.
But what did we prove on the, yeah?
Yeah. So that's what the original application was for.
Yes.
What they realized is that if they reduced to 10,000 square feet, that could be approved with a zoning clearance certificate, which requires no public notification, no public involvement. It's a ministerial permit.
Okay. So, so the process worked on that. And I look at this process and all the meetings we had in 14, 15, 16, to get where we needed to be and everything. And we didn't get a lot of input from the people that brought this forward. I'm going to bet none, because I don't remember any, but I don't remember everybody that commented. But I bet you and I have been to 30 sites with trying to work out agreements. And we've worked out agreements on 25, and usually, it's to the benefit of the neighbor more so than the applicant. But there was a happy medium, and there was a, we got road, we cut back, we moved them, we did water. The process that we did, all these meetings, has worked. And then, I know personally how many guys I talked into coming out of the shadows. Most of those guys sitting in the back rows wouldn't sit in the front row, so would you guys? But I'm just saying, coming out because they felt it was the right thing. And I think the best thing is, you can't buy peace, is what one of them said. Helicopters, everything else. They wanted to come in and do what was right, and support their communities. And then, we bring this forward, and since I got hit up twice to sign it as just a citizen, the idea that they were reaching out just to help the small farmer, this was going to help the small farmer. And then, obviously, we've seen the maps they've shown, and I mean, we have 320 acres total, I mean, like, 15 one-hundredths of all our total land is under cultivation. So, as we, we have sewer ponds, we have more sewer ponds, I think, than we have, but anyway. As we move forward, the system has worked up till now, till we got this. And my biggest issue is, a couple of the items on here is about forming an ad hoc committee to work with them. Have we got contact from them? I'm hearing that they do not want to, they don't want to discuss. They have their signatures, it's going to the ballot. So before we spend a lot of time putting an ad hoc committee that has nowhere to go, I'm just wondering, is that an actuality? Did you get an email?
I have not seen that email. I was made aware of it about three minutes before I walked back downstairs.
Okay.
And our presentation was done then. I think one of the things that I may have changed, if I had time, the recommendation is to look at legal alternatives to address this if they're not really willing to, if they've already stated that they're not willing to have a discussion, to try to reach a common mind and common understanding of what's best for the entire county.
Yeah, because I think the industry has a small glimmer of light at the end of the tunnel. Right now, some of the guys are thinking, you know, that maybe they'll hang on, and they, it's still a viable industry, which I think they've got the right idea. And it's not necessarily an oncoming train coming at them down the tunnel. It's actually a light that's going to work. But this, from your report, and I think the report's great. I mean, you told, you said we get, it's unattainable. It's probably unenforceable. And it just doesn't put a nail in a coffin. It digs, it digs the hole, names the cemetery, and puts everybody in it in a mass grave. And I just don't think that's where we need to be right now. So I would love to work with the parties, so we have. But to say the system hasn't been working, considering how many sites I've been to, and then how many sites that we've, there has nobody been in here protesting a site that got more square footage after they came in and got it protested. So people are getting their issues addressed. We're working now on the light leakage that is still a problem. But we had 13,500 grows six years ago, and we're down to probably 1,500 in the county now. So I mean, it's, and my hat's off to the guys that are still hanging in there. They're, they've got a quality product that there must be a market for, so congratulations. But I'm just saying, as we move forward, is this even enforceable if it passes?
Thanks for asking that question.
Financially, financially and physically.
I think one of the difficult things, I don't know what, the decision for the farmers is different than the regulatory decision. And one of the things, from a regulatory standpoint, that kind of had me conflicted as we were working on this is our experience with Measure S. And in that particular case, we took an initiative, and we took existing county code and practice, and we tried to marry them. And that's really what's being asked of here, is to marry this initiative with existing code and to change practice. But if you get it wrong, you end up with somebody bringing litigation against you, and then the court deciding. And with so much ambiguity with this, there's such little direction with respect to renewals, multiple permits. There's inconsistencies within the text itself relative to category four roads. How are we supposed to interpret what the people understood that they were signing? That's nearly an impossible task.
Well, I, actually being one of the ones who was asked to sign, and listened to the whole thing, and them probably being unaware because I'm so low-key of who I was, I was utterly amazed when they were saying all the things that we passed and streamlined so the big growers could get their permits in months, the little growers had to wait, and that we were working with all the outside interests. Those were three of the things that really stood out. And that's, and I understand, you're selling a product. I mean, this is the best car on the market, please buy my car. I understand, just sign here, it doesn't cost you time, it's just going to make it a better place. A lot of people misunderstood what they were saying. I know I've talked to a few people, and they're seeing, they're seeing little blurbs now going, "So this means my neighbor down the road can't put in his solar, the water tanks, just what you were saying and everything else." I'm not saying there isn't some good in here that's workable, but the thing is, you need to talk to the industry to work with them on the good. And I mean, even if you don't like the industry, if you don't like the industry, you're better off working with them than just trying to shut them down because I don't think that happens. What it does is we go back 10 years, we go back into the shadows, we go back a couple hundred yards off the road, we go back to getting the water wherever we get it, because that's what we're going to get, is we're going to have people still having to make payments, or make a living, or live their lives, and we're going to have an influx of black market back. So that's the part that scares me probably worse than anything. And I know the sheriff does not have the forces, you don't have the forces to regulate, to permit them, or renew their applications. I know the sheriff doesn't have the enforcement capabilities for the black market right now.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Wilson, please.
I'm not going to be as quite a wide a brush in this, but I share some of the concerns. The Measure S, I mean, this board, or, you know, drafted that. I'm just saying, in our best intention, although, I can't even remember if I was on the board when Measure, I don't think so. I don't, yeah, that was drafted by this board with the intention of having that come together with existing code. And it didn't, I mean, there was issues in there, and then with relation- And it didn't, I mean, there was issues in there, and then with relationship to enforcement of it, there was litigation that came out of that. Now, this one was crafted outside this body in the, in the, uh, professional advice of, you know, planning staff, or potentially planners, I don't know. So, there's probably more likelihood of have, of those potential conflicts with, with code. And I think, you and I talked about one that was fairly specific, which was in relationship to, um, a discretionary permit required when any change in structure happens on, on a site. Is that, would that be, is there a square footage associated with that? What would that be?
So, the, uh, H C R I, the way it's drafted, is that anything over 3,000 square feet would require a discretionary permit.
For any change in structure?
Well, that's what's not clear.
Okay.
So, expansion, by definition, is a change in structure. Normally, an expansion requires either a modification to the permit.
Yeah.
Um, or a, a new permit, perhaps, depending on what it is. And, and so, if it's already over 3,000 square feet, and it's a substantial change, and that hasn't been worked out in the eyes of this initiative.
Right.
So, we're assuming that it would be a discretionary, um, even modification, requires a public hearing, yep.
But the term structure is in the initiative?
The term structure is not in the initiative, it's in our zoning ordinance.
Our zoning, okay, that's the issue, okay.
And, and so, we're basically, um, using existing defined terms, and this is in the report, we put the definition of structure in, in the report.
Yeah.
Um, so it's basically anything that's on the ground.
Mm-hmm. Is there something, the definition of structure?
Not the definition, the term.
Right, yeah.
The term structure is in the, is in the...
The term structure is in the definition of expanded. The definition of structure is in the zoning ordinance.
Is in the zoning ordinance, that, that's true. And it's a, but I'm just saying, in the, in the initiative, the, the term structure is used.
Yes.
Is it not? That's the part I'm trying to get to, because I, I have some, some past experience in a former life with relationship to that and permits, and with, with coastal development permits and stuff. And one thing I've learned is that structure is anything that's constructed, right? Or requires construction. And, and I think it's a much broader term than people imagine. Oftentimes, people believe structure means like a house, or even a greenhouse, or something that you build that has walls associated with it in some form or another. But it's not actually, a structure can be a levee, it can be, um, you know, putting in a, a solar array, it can be a water tank with a, with a, um, you know, with some kind of foundation to it. There's a lot of things that, that structure can be defined as. And I think that, that is a, that's a very, it's a, that could be very problematic when you're talking about enforcement with relation to this. I'm just saying, like, that's, I'm just using that as an example of where, of where we can get caught around the axle of litigation. And it all it takes is one neighbor, you know, really, to say, you know, who's not, who's very dissatisfied. And then, and then the whole thing is kind of thrown into a, into a boil. It's just a concern I have, I, I just want to thank you for indulging my, my ex, my question on that.
Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you for the analysis, it's very helpful, and it's been a good presentation so far. I, I had a number of questions, most of which you answered in the presentation. So, um, the one about, uh, the permit cap, though, um, I, I'm not understanding how essentially we would handle, um, the process of, um, considering new applications, given that we would have met and exceeded, um, the threshold outlined here. Um, so, um, could you speak to that a little bit more?
Certainly, so, basically, what it allows is that any application that was complete as of the date of the filing could be finished. And the permit cap is 1.05 times the number of permits that were issued. And I believe that was, it was 900 and something. So, we're at 1027 right now, so we're, we're above that. So, we could not take in applications for new cultivation. And because all the permits are, are basically cumulatively exceeding the cap, we're, we're set in place right there.
And, and just on that same note, um, you talk about the, um, negative impacts on the continuing implementation of the RRR program, and that, that's, as I'm still learning about this, will you, will you expand on that a little bit as well?
Absolutely. And this helps to perhaps explain some of the context of, of the likelihood of there really being a lot more applications. Is that what the, uh, RRR program did, is it allowed sites to be retired. So, the cultivation site may not have had a legal water source, it may have been on slopes that were too steep, um, may have had cultural resources and, and just really not a good site to continue to cultivate on. So, the ordinance allows those sites to be retired and then remediated. And, and the remediation process is that it basically gets restored to a pre-cannabis condition. And then it gets relocated to another site. What a lot of cultivators have done, what a lot of people have done, is that they have come in and gotten a permit to retire a site, they've remediated that site, but they have not been able to find a landing spot for that relocation. And so, those permits are, are just kind of hanging out there, and those would be new permits to go on to a site. So, those sites probably would not be allowed to land anyplace. And people have expended money to retire the site, to remediate the site, to clean it up, and, and now they don't have the ability to relocate it. And unfortunately, what happened with the RRRs, maybe this is a little too much, is that they kind of became commodities where they were sold. And, and so people are holding these RRRs. And part of the reason that a lot of mart landing is there are not a lot of, and this is the key point, there's not a lot of sites left to really receive RRRs that are outside of community plan areas.
Okay. Supervisor Bushnell? I'm sorry, staff, please.
I just wanted to add one more thing, it's an important feature of the RRR program. Uh, the parcel that has the retirement site, uh, there's a covenant, a restrictive covenant that gets recorded that bans cannabis cultivation in perpetuity, and also bans development where the cultivation site would be. So, some of these applicants that Director Ford was speaking of have recorded that covenant and agreed to that restriction. And under the H C R I, they would have no place to have moved, to move their cultivation.
Thank you, Supervisor Bushnell.
Um, thank you, I just want a clarification with what Supervisor Wilson was saying earlier about structures. So, my understanding, pretty much two things, don't require a permit or are considered structure would be a 5,000 square foot, or 5,000 gallon or less water tank, and what size of building?
So, there is a difference, and this is really important thing. Is that it, there are things that are structures. A fence is a structure, it may not require a building permit.
Okay.
An ag-exempt greenhouse, a hoop house, is absolutely a structure, but it may not require a building permit.
So, under this initiative, are those permitted as, are, they would be not able to be done? Is that considered growth to an applicant?
Yes.
So, anything, okay, all right.
That's, I, just to reiterate what Supervisor Wilson was making the point, it's just anything you scratch out on the ground almost is a structure, literally.
Right, right, so, okay, well, thank you.
Okay, great, um, I'll just ask a couple of quick questions, and then we'll go to the public, and they're stacking up rapidly here. So, um, there was a lot of comments about how there was a lot of things in the initiative that weren't accurate, and I think you've laid those out quite clearly in your report. We've received some packages and emails from folks out there that I think also has some inaccurate things in them, and I just wanted to try and make sure we have clarity around them. So, as I understand it, um, for instance, there's a comment about a particular company that's a cannabis company, and it says that with the passage of this initiative, they would lose two permits due to prohibition on having more than one permit. So, that's not true, as I understand it. The truth is that even with the passage of this initiative, everybody keeps everything they already have. But if they add a structure, or come in for a permit of any kind, then that, and they have a non-conforming use to the initiative, then that could very well cause them to lose their licenses and/or other types of triggers, right? But you don't lose those things unless you come forward and make a change.
Well, that was one of the things I was trying to say that is not clear in the initiative.
From your perspective, it's unclear.
Because the initiative says that no approval shall result in.
Right.
And so, is a renewal an approval?
Right.
And can you say that it's not an approval when you have expired the permit?
Right. Okay, but if you're coming in for a permit to add a house, or a structure, or a greenhouse, or something else, that's clearly gonna require approval, and that then would trigger the non-conforming use, and you would then have to be, come into conformance. But you don't have to come into conformance if you don't make any changes with non-conforming.
Well, so, I, I, one of the struggles here, Supervisor Madrona, is, is that's mixing some of the complexity of this.
Okay, fair enough.
And, and so, the non-conforming, that's why I tried to break the non-conforming discussion into a couple of different realms.
Right.
And so, you become non-conforming, and then if you do anything that is an expansion, you either come into compliance, you can't do it, or, or you discontinue it. And then there's the, uh, relative to the multiple permits, I mean, the way it's structured, it requires an application for a renewal. So, the, the initiative is clear, it's looking for something more than what our current inspection process currently does. It's wanting an application. So, what do you typically apply for? A permit.
Right. So, your point is that because of the annual renewal process alone, whether or not somebody was planning to change anything or not, that would automatically trigger the non-conforming situation. So, you might have a year of grace, but that'd be about it.
Right.
So, okay, I just wanted to get some clarity around that. And as far as when these things would take effect, I've seen a couple of different things. One suggested that as of March of 2023, or 22, actually, I think it said, when the initiative was first filed.
Right.
Uh, but doesn't all of this only get triggered if it gets approved by the voters? So, it would be March of 2024, that the triggers would happen and change?
They would become effective.
Effective, okay.
On that date.
Yeah.
But where the triggers are identified as prior dates, those dates then become definitive.
Well, it gets super complicated there, doesn't it? Real quick, okay, that's all I have, Supervisor Bushnell, another question?
Uh, I'm sorry, that just, I thought of something. So, currently, um, multitudes of farms are considering reduction. Um, I suspect that when Measure S, whatever happens with Measure S and the market, um, farms may decide to, uh, do reduction in cultivation. What, and that would be an amendment, I believe. And so, what does that look like with this initiative, if you were to reduce your cultivation site?
Actually, by practice, we haven't required a, a permit modification, we just...
So, if you're, if you're gonna, um, if you're gonna, say you have an acre, and you're, you are realizing, I'm never gonna grow more than a half a acre, and I know that through county, we can say, um, you know, we won't charge you for Measure S, but the state currently does, so I don't know if there would be something that the county and state would have to do to reduce that?
So, I, I think that, if I understand, the question is, is if somebody decided voluntarily to reduce the size of their permit, they could do that with us. We would then respond to the state inquiry to see if they were in good standing and compliance, based upon the size that they've declared to us. So, that, I don't see that as being a complication.
So, if you were to remove, uh, say, you had an acre of greenhouses, and you decided you're, you're done, you're only gonna do half, and you're gonna shrink your cultivation site, and you're gonna remove those structures, move your water tanks, you know, to, to accompany the state to be able to reduce your square footage as, as well, what would that do?
So, that could be done. And then if somebody declared that they were doing that with us, so that they would minimize their tax liability, and they stayed that way for two, three seasons, they could end up, that would be the non-conforming level that they were then at, not the original acre they were approved at.
That's the answer I was looking for, thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Um, you know, when this, when we first had the presentation on the initiative, what was it, five, six months ago now? There was some talk that a lot of people might rush in and try and get a lot of expanded permits, or this or that, or different things, before the initiative passes. But your com, comments about the annual renewal process and other things, I mean, are you seeing a trend of people coming in, wanting to quickly expand or do different things right now? Is that a trend at all, or?
We've not seen that, people joked about it.
Yeah, because it doesn't seem like it makes any difference with annual renewal. You'd be, if this passes, then you're non-conforming either way. So, you'd be making all this expense to do something that then probably gets taken away later anyway, if it passes, which, who knows where that's gonna go? Okay, well, uh, thank you, Board, for the questions, clarifications, Supervisor Arroyo.
I know we're gonna go to public comment, and there are probably many strong feelings about this matter, and I, I just wanted to make the statement that, you know, staff recommendation here is in part for us to, um, take some action to form a collaborative group, should the, we don't know whether that will be successful, but, um, the concept behind that, and what the Board's direction was previously, was to work with the writers of this initiative to see if there is any way that we can address the concerns that you've brought up. And, and I, you know, from my perspective, I especially want to address the concerns um, about our, our capacity to, to actually fulfill the requirements of this, as well as, of course, um, address the community, you know, community need with our local businesses. But I guess I say this in the spirit of, um, noting that we still, I hope we have a collaborative working relationship moving forward with the people who have brought this forward, so that we can actually dig into some of these questions about things that were infeasible or unclear. Um, and so I just wanted to say that before we kind of launch into further discussion about, about what to do next, because the hope is that, um, the writers of the initiative will collaborate with us. And so, you know, that's more of a statement of, of intention at this point than it is a question or, um, or anything along those lines. But, um, you know, I hope we can, even though we've pointed out a lot of pretty problematic things, and I'm sure many of the public commentators will, will point out some very problematic things for them, I still hope we can move forward with collaborating with them.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Arroyo. And so with that, we've concluded some of the questions and clarifications. So what we're gonna do is go to public comment. And it is 2 o'clock, and I have 35 folks in the Zoom. We've got about 18 to 20 people here in the room. If you do the math, if we had three minutes per speaker, we'll be here till probably 6 o'clock this evening. I do have a couple of board members that need to get on the road later this afternoon, and I don't want to quell, uh, public comment, but I am gonna reduce comments to two minutes. Uh, and as Supervisor Arroyo said, you know, let's focus on what we can do to try and move forward. Uh, there's a couple of recommendations here for our Board that we're gonna be considering, uh, to be able to move forward. And we're gonna start with those in Zoom, and then we'll go to those in the room. But I'll ask for, Supervisor Bushnell, you had another comment?
I, I do want to respectfully ask you to allow for three minutes for people that have done that, and to maybe ask the group to just keep the comments, to ask our community to respect that. You didn't warn them this morning, they have set up for three minutes. If they cannot repeat theirsself, that would be good, but I don't think that's, I'm just gonna respectfully say that's not fair last minute.
I understand exactly what you're saying, but we could easily be down to three board members at the point that we're trying to consider the issues... members at the point that we're trying to consider the issues and make some decisions. So I'll go to the rest of the board. What would your preferences be? I'll start with Supervisor Bone.
I'm staying until the meeting goes. It's just supposed to start snowing in Laytonville, so. But with that being said, before we go to commute, to commenters, can we hear from the, the writers of this if they're even going to collaborate? Because if we're going to hear, I want to collaborate, I want to collaborate, and they say, nope, we're going to roll our dice and go right to the voters, then that changes everything on here. So we may not need two or three minutes, because if they're not going to collaborate, we're not going to get anywhere, make a motion as a county to come out against this and let it go to where it's going, I guess. I, I don't know. But I would love to hear actualities that the writers of this initiative would even consider. And if they don't, then we respect what they've gone through, and they, they got the signatures the way they had to get them, and, and we'll deal with it that way. But I, I don't know if we need to waste, you know, and I don't necessarily mean waste, but spend everybody's time on something that is not going to come to fruition.
Okay, so I've got two items that we're going to come back to here real quick. Supervisor Wilson, what's your preference?
I kind of lean on both Supervisor Bushnell and, and Bone with relationship to, I think the audience knows that, you've expressed that we have a little tiny bit of a time crunch for a few of us, but that's okay. We do want to hear from people, and so if you'll get to the point, that'd be awesome.
Okay.
I also think that what, what Supervisor Bone is saying with relationship to, like, if we're going to enter into a negotiated process and that there, you know, because there are two or three people that are, you know, have that authority to be able to, to, you know, do that, then we should probably find out sooner rather than later, because it is on the agenda. And so there is an expectation around that. And also, if we have a lot of commenters, I don't want them spinning around in circles on something that maybe we might be able to find.
Understood. Okay, Supervisor Arroyo?
I concur. I'll, I'll hear people out, but I'd love to hear from the writers of it about what their intentions are.
Okay, so we've got two issues. We're going to go ahead and stick with the three minutes. And as Supervisor Bushnell and others have said, if you can be concise with your comments, that will be fantastic. Sometimes you can simply come up and say, I am opposed to the initiative for these reasons. Bam, bam, bam. Or I support the initiative for these reasons. At any rate, we'll stick with the three minutes and honor that. Appreciate the Board. It sounds like they're willing to stay as long as they need to.
All those go.
The only reason I did it was because when I mentioned that, I was working with information that has now changed in terms of the Board's availability. As far as the initiative proponents, they're certainly not in the participants Zoom. And it's difficult to know if they're in the caller Zoom, because they are only phone numbers. So what I, what do you think, Nikki? We could say, if you are the proposal initiative folks, and you want to talk, raise your hand right now, and we'll watch to see what hand comes up. But there's already like 20 hands up, right? So, yes.
Sorry to interrupt Chairman Madrone. Just one point of clarification from the county's perspective, as we move forward with this discussion and discussing what communications the county can put forward around this initiative. We are not able to take a position of opposition or support. So any county efforts will be to educate the public on impacts, pros and cons. So just as you frame your context around what the county can do, it's important that we don't represent that we will be opposing or supporting any particular initiatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Nice to be able to follow the rules, basically. So again, I don't know that the initiative proponents are here, and I haven't seen any new hands come up. So as much as we'd like to have that, I would suggest that if they are here, people would love to hear from you in regards to the comments that were made about your willingness to work with folks to try and improve areas that need improvement, and then ultimately drop the initiative potentially. But of course, there's a lot of work to do to get to that place. So if you are here, we'd love to hear from you at some point today. But at this point, I can't identify if they're in the queue or not. Okay, so we're all good on that? Yeah, Supervisor Bushnell?
So we all received an email, I believe, on March 6th
Mm-hmm.
From these folks that states exactly what their intentions are.
Would you like to read that?
Sure. So, "We regards to recommendations, make a motion to form and ad hoc our motions. The initiative was agreed by 7,000-plus and foreign Humboldt County citizens and had more than the legal required number of signatures as determined by the Humboldt County Elections Office, and therefore should propose for voters' consideration on March 2024." Period.
Great. Thank you for that. And, you know, in, in your presentation, Director Ford, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard from you that
Oh, I don't know.
There may very well be some areas in our cannabis ordinances that might need some improvements and some consideration. But this initiative doesn't get us there. It creates a lot of other, as you said, unintended consequences potentially. So I think that, you know, that's another spirit of how to come to this. You know, are there things that we can do to improve? But that's not going to all happen here today. But that is certainly, I think, ultimately our goal. Whether it's cannabis or anything else, if we think there are issues, we need to correct, and we need to work on those things. So I heard that. That sounds accurate to you? Okay, great. Yes, Supervisor Arroyo?
Sorry, just, so this is from one person involved in the initiative, and I, I don't, I, I still think there could be room for conversation around what the idea is of, you know, modifying, one of the proposals here was to consider modification of the ordinance. I still think it's worth an attempt to reach out in person and communicate around that. I'm not saying that would be successful. This seems pretty clear. But my interactions with the folks involved have, have led me to think that there's a few different perspectives going on. And so it might be helpful to just have that communication and consider the, one of the elements of staff recommendation about still, you know, attempting that.
Great. Yes.
One thing before we get the comment going, and I'd like clarification from the, from our council around what Supervisor Arroyo just said. So do we, can one person modify, or does it take all three?
The statutory requirements regarding withdrawal are somewhat unclear as to whether or not it requires one or all three. It is, it's our office's opinion that we will take the position that it does take all three.
Yep. Okay, thank you for that.
Great, all right. Okay, well, let's jump into public comment, and appreciate your patience here and the audience here today. We've got significant number of hands up in the Zoom, and the first one, oh, first, let me say, if you are in Zoom remote and you're watching this on our streaming video, it is delayed. So if you're listening to the audio there, you could easily miss your time to speak. So turn your audio off and just listen to your phone, and that's your best way to get a queue on when you're called. So the first number is 6520, star six to unmute, and you have three minutes. Star six to unmute.
I'm sorry.
No, there you go. Good.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Vanessa Valare, and I have a 1,300-square-foot interim permit that I applied for in 2016. And I also have a consulting firm that helps cannabis farmers with their cultivation licenses. And I just wanted to say that the ordinances that are currently in place provide a robust protocol for monitoring and environmental stewardship. Years of work by not only the Planning Department, but also by the Board of Supervisors has created a path forward that works. It holds cultivators responsible with yearly inspections, monitoring reports, and fee payments. If you look at other counties surrounding Humboldt that have very restrictive ordinances that do not follow an EIR, you can easily see our success as a county. Humboldt County had a very comprehensive EIR completed. This EIR lays out all the issues that Humboldt County would have to change to support a legal cannabis industry. It allows for sequel guidelines to be met and exceeded. Through property mitigations, projects are brought into compliance to meet the guidelines of this environmental impact report, therefore making Humboldt County more environmentally compliant as a whole. To allow this proposed policy to continue any further is to negate the time, money, education, and resources that were put into writing that environmental impact report in the first place. This ordinance, this new ordinance would push people back into the illegal market, and the ordinance clearly states that it does, the new ordinance clearly states that it does nothing to have an impact on the illegal black market growth. Therefore, it's just cultivating a culture that would put the black market back at the forefront of Humboldt County. As a person with a 1,300-square-foot interim permit, this ordinance also stops me from getting a permit, as I don't have the required infrastructure I need because of regulations that have changed along the way, and I need more water tanks. It also, I would not make the cap. We've already exceeded the cap in permit, so with its interim permit, I'm not approved yet. But I applied in 2016 with 1,300 square feet. All these reasons combined, plus with the fact that the authors of the initiative will not sit down with us and take the time to actually make this work out better for all of us, I tried calling them on multiple occasions ahead of time, and was confronted by people at Bay Shore Mall with misinformation about what was actually in this ordinance, and asked to sign it, which I did not. I really think that the Board of Supervisors needs to do whatever they can do to stop any of this from moving forward. And let's work as a community like we have in the past to make things better, because things are working in Humboldt County, and they are working well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 1180, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hi, thank you. I first wanted to point out to the public that as someone who was approached to sign this petition, having previously read the initiative, I felt that they were misleading people to get them to sign it. They were not disclosing everything that the initiative would do to the cannabis program as it stands. And I, I think that they were just saying whatever they could say in order to get people on their side, whether or not people really understood what they were signing or not. Beyond that, you know, we have a problem with our roads in this county, and cultivation required to be on a Category 4 road would make most of the permitted farms non-conforming. If renewal constitutes a new approval, this would put most farms out of business. The one permit per person limit would also shut down people that have multiple permits if approval includes renewals. Most of these farms are pre-existing. This would also prohibit people from vertical integration in order to compete in the state market where other counties are allowing vertical integration. They wouldn't be allowed out of microbusiness, processing, anything to their current permits. Additionally, a 10,000-square-foot cap would take 416 currently active permits into non-conforming status. Again, most of these are pre-existing. Large-scale growth in California are farms that have 100 acres, 60 acres, huge growth, truly large-scale cultivation. And they're already legal in many counties. This would take Humboldt County completely out of competition in the state market. Again, no ability to add additional infrastructure without permit modifications and additional hearing would prevent people from adding the infrastructure that would enable them to store more water, transition to solar power, and be more environmentally compliant. This is the opposite of what they're saying this initiative is supposed to be focused on. Having permits expire annually when state licenses do not run on the same timeline would push all permitting into insecurity every single year. It would add cost to the permitting program for annual reviews. It would also cause county staff to review 1,000 permits a year, which would maybe break the Planning Department. I don't know how they would even be able to do that.
30 seconds.
Additionally, regarding public noticing, they asked that staff should go driving around to all notice properties and physically post notices in public areas near the project site. That would add unnecessary traffic to the roads, increase the carbon footprint, and add litter in the form of paper notices stapled to trees or wherever they could be posted. And again, this is the opposite of environmentally conscious.
Thank you, commenter. That three minutes goes quick. Our next is 3025, star six to unmute. You have three minutes. There you go.
My name is Ken Hammack. I'm going to keep this really brief. I spoke a number of months ago when this originally came up. This is not only complex, and I really appreciate Director Ford's outlining of all the difficulties and confusion around this complex initiative, but this is anti-community. We've been treating cannabis community here as a separate community for a long time. They've come into the light, they've got their business license, they've showed up, and they're stewards. I've seen it on many farms that have visited throughout the county. I implore, and I really appreciate the supervisor's comments today, I really implore all of you to continue to fight this. And I've heard personally from a number of folks, they feel like they were misled when they signed that document. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Speaker. And next, we have 7429, star six to unmute. There you go. You've got three minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Robi Tenorio, and I'm calling to say I do not support the initiative for several reasons. And the thing is, is that I understand why the initiative was developed and received enough public support to qualify for the ballot. That understanding is because your Board and the public are and have been somewhat misled by the planning staff with, with this current staff report. This report continues the, the fable of existing. The people who are upset by the enlargement of the industry are seeing with their own eyes that enlargement. Many farms may have been pre-existing, but they were not over 10,000 square feet, they were not 20 greenhouses covering the meadows, they were not a half an acre, they were not an acre. And that's a pure and simple fable. The ordinances are based on forcing farmers to go big, to lie about what is existing. And so the people are upset because they see expansion not existing. Farm may have existed, but on a much, much smaller scale. And for staff to insist that there is less growth, so there is less impact loses reality, because the farms that are permitted are significantly, significantly larger in square footage. And until this fable is admitted, there will be no agreement with folks who are upset and want the expansion to stop. So again, I do not support the initiative. But until we get honest, I'm afraid that resolution with the folks who are upset will be too difficult.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 3729, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Shannon Hughes. I live out in Willow Creek. My husband and I have a small farm called Full Cup Farmstead. Today, I'd like to speak to the residents who may have signed this petition without a full understanding of the reality behind the initiative. I'm going to quickly read a statement that my mother-in-law put on her own social media and gave me permission to read. She signed the petition. Approximately six to 12 months ago, I was approached in a Safeway parking lot in the Kimbleville by a man who asked me to sign a petition for the Humboldt County Reform Initiative. When I'm asked to sign a petition, I usually do not have time to read the whole initiative, so I always ask what it is about. The man told me that it was to support and help the small cannabis farmers in Humboldt County. I'm all about helping our local small farmers, so I signed it. I have come to understand that the initiative not only does not support small farmers, but would make operation more difficult in several ways. I believe I was misled as to what this petition was really about. I have learned my lesson not to sign one of those petitions without reading it unless I have full knowledge of it already. And unfortunately for people hired to obtain signatures, I almost never have time to read something in a Safeway parking lot. I will probably no longer sign petitions in parking lots. If you sign a petition thinking you are helping small, local cannabis farmers, you are also misled. We cannot rescind our, our signatures, but we can certainly correct this by voting against this if it makes it through our ballot. So that's the end of her statement. And as a small farmer, I'd just like to say, let me be clear, this initiative is not in support of small farmers. This is an anti-cannabis initiative for Humboldt County. No small farmers are speaking out in favor of or standing with the proponents in support of this initiative. Director Ford clearly lined out the flaws and short-sighted facets of this initiative. So please don't be confused or misled. The proponents decided to write policy without consulting anyone educated or experienced in Humboldt County cannabis. And after hearing from small farmers and county staff, they have so far refused to discuss changes or pull their initiatives. So simply put, this is written for them, not for the small farmer, and any statements by the proponents suggesting this is written for the small farmer is 100% dishonest. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next, And next in the queue, we have 8463, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hi, my name is Wendy Cornberg, and I operate Son of Us Humboldt Full Sun Farms down in Seven Humboldt, and I have deep embarrassment and chagrin to say that I am one of the people who signed that petition. I was absolutely misled. I was told that this same thing would help small farmers, it would help us, you know, fund our road infrastructure, which of course is not true, and that it would also be an initiative against any incoming large-scale farms. I'm just here to voice my opposition. I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I also am encouraging anybody who may be listening and may not be aware of what went on, that this initiative was, you know, given to the people to sign without full disclosure of what it was. I also normally read things entirely, and I did not this time, and I again will never do that. I will never sign a petition when I am distracted with my kids or at a farmer's market, and that's unfortunate because there's a lot of good petitions out there. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 5141, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hello, my name is Nick Erickson. I'm owner of Full Moon Farms. You know, in light of your guys' time crunching to avoid redundancy of a lot of the key talking points, it's already been covered. I just want to ask the board to oppose this initiative today. It's absolutely absurd that three people can wield so much power over so many people and families in this county that they've never met in person or are willing to sit down and communicate with on this. So yeah, please just oppose this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 4585, star six to unmute. 4585, you are, there you go.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me today. My name is Nicole Riggs, and this initiative, which I've heard referred to as the Karen Initiative, is misleading as it is dangerous. It's misleading because the proponents give false facts when they solicit a signature, and it's dangerous because it will cause devastation not only on small, local farms, but on our rural economy as a whole. Do we want Humboldt to be just another part of rural America, bleak, devastated? That's what you get with the Karen Initiative. I'm part of the Cooperative Agriculture Network, and we run an academy training farmers to develop a cooperative sector in cannabis here in Humboldt. We are solutions-oriented, and we want to see the entire region thrive. That means stable farms, quality products, and economic growth. If this initiative passes, our work will be for nothing. Just look back to 2016 when cannabis was legalized. With legalization, the state of California had four main goals. One, promote public health. Two, reduce the size of the illicit markets. Three, offer legal protection to responsible actors. And four, capture and invest tax revenues. Top of number two, reduce the size of the illicit markets. What's the illicit market? It's those that have not gone legal. It's in the pockets of the illicit market that the water diversions have happened and environmental degradation has happened, big trucks and noise, all the things that the proponents are concerned about. These issues arise in parts of the non-services or non-compliant industry. The ones that we care about, the ones that the proponents say they care about, are the small permitted farmers. Permitted farmers follow the rules. They comply, they follow water storage, they have their products tested, they pay fees, they have inspections. The report has stated that 90% of active farms have no violations. Farmers are motivated to comply. But ask yourself, will this initiative cause the cost of compliance to be greater than the cost of noncompliance? If the Karen Initiative passes, farmers will be incentivized not to comply because the cost of compliance could be too high. In fact, they'd be insurmountable, and the unregulated market would appear to offer greater economic advantage. Farms will shut down, and those that remain will have to be illicit. And with illicit count increased, we have water issues, environmental issues, road issues, all the things that the proponents are concerned about, they'd be worse. The Karen Initiative is misleading.
30 seconds.
The Karen Initiative is misleading. If the proponents have sincere, they must withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have 5602, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hi, my name is Matt Kertz, and I'm the owner of Humboldt Cannabis Tours, and we're based in Eureka. We do cannabis farm tours out to legally permitted farms. I was, you know, when all this was going down about first a year ago, I was told by the proponents of this, the people that filed it, that it wouldn't affect tourism. And now we know from Director Ford's presentation that, you know, my reading was that this, he mentioned tourism twice in that presentation, and my read is this would completely destroy cannabis tourism within one year. As soon as anyone has to renew their annual, if their permits become annual and they have to renew it annually, and tourism is an addition to the permit, that means even anyone who has a tourism permit, of which we only have three right now, they will, as soon as they have to renew their permit, they will then lose, they'll have to choose between their cannabis permit or their tourism permit, which means they'll lose their tourism permit. Anyway, so it turns out this is an existential threat to cannabis tourism. So if we want to do cannabis tourism at all in the future here in Humboldt County, that means this initiative can't pass. What I would hope the board does is, I mean, the people don't really seem to want to negotiate, I guess try and negotiate with them, but I don't see spending a lot of time on that. I think we need to, I think we need to draft a competing initiative that makes this initiative void. And the only people that can do that are the supervisors. So I really hope that we cannot spend a ton of time trying to negotiate with frankly economic terrorists, and we can spend time drafting a competing initiative that will just make this not matter, if that's a possibility. Thank you for your time and consideration. I know cannabis tourism is important to those on the board, and this initiative will just make that never happen. So thank you so much for your time. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have 9687. There you go.
Thank you, supervisors. Kelly Fuentes with Marder Advisors. As other callers mentioned, you know, it's telling that no small cultivation or craft cannabis organization, no cooperative or trade association has voiced support for this initiative. And to propose that its purpose was to help small farmers was a misleading declaration that was used on unsuspecting voters to obtain a signature. Also, if you look at the map submitted in page six of our public comment, it's from their own campaign, and it makes it appear as though cannabis is taking over the county. But the reality is, less than one square mile has been permitted. And if you compare that with other agriculture, that currently has 970 square miles, which means 27% of the land use in the county is for agriculture, but just 0.016% is for permitted cannabis. Now, we know the most significant potential impacts on the environment are actually from illegal farms, because they have no oversight from the county, from Fish and Wildlife, the Water Board, or any other agency. And this initiative doesn't address that. And something that wasn't actually mentioned in the language of the review that was done was that the initiative can't be changed, the language can't be changed, it can't be improved by the board, only the voters with another ballot. It's too restrictive. And as the director showed, this initiative would prohibit any expansion on legal permitted farms, including new solar systems, new water tanks, new rain catchment ponds. It really does nothing to support the environment. Now, as the saying goes, you know, you can't ban cannabis, you can only ban legal cannabis. And due to the rigid restrictions of the HCRI, you know, honestly, we should just call this what it is, is they kill legal cannabis ballot initiative, and it has the potential to make operating illegal cannabis farms untenable. And the result was put some farmers back into the illicit market, which they've worked so hard to put behind them. We recommend the Board of Supervisors firmly express the negative impact of this ballot measure to the public, and vote to consider legal action or even your own ballot initiative with correct ongoing issues for craft farmers. We believe this is necessary. We have to preserve the investment that's already been made over these last six years by the county, by the farmers, and honestly, by the taxpayers who've actually paid to build illegal cannabis industry in Humboldt. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Can we pause for a second? We've lost like a significant number of people. I know we still have a quorum, but I'm a little...
Yes.
But...
We will pause for five minutes, waiting for our folks to return.
Okay. For those on the phone, I just thought it was a little surprising and...
Thank you. So we're going to take a five-minute break. Whether or not I needed to cut off my ponytail or not, the decision was that I can keep it for a while longer. At any rate, we're back and looking forward to the rest of the comments today. And at the end, then we'll have some discussion at the board about where we can go and what our options are and make some decisions. So again, thank you for your patience. So going back to the queue, I have 5795 is next in the queue. Star six to unmute.
Excuse me, Chair Madron?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's 5798.
5798, thank you. 5798, star six to unmute. Actually, it's 5798 is what it's showing up here, right? 5798, you are, you're on. Star six to unmute. Last chance, 5798. There you go.
Sorry, I don't know why the first 10 times I punched in star six, it didn't work, but...
Thanks.
...to the 11th.
Thanks for your persistence.
This is Hannah White calling from Willow Creek, and appreciate the opportunity to have this public discussion. I think the unfortunate thing about this initiative is that it doesn't really consider the democratic process. It's an affront to the public process. It's anti-community. Cultivators were not considered when initiative was run for their behalf. Local environmental organizations were not considered about how best to implement potential policy to benefit the environment. Families livelihoods were not considered. Misleading information got voters to sign enough times that put cultivators, county staff, and industry advocates into a tizzy to try and understand the total impact. The county will be buried in litigation, staffing costs enforcement will skyrocket, loss in rural property value will drop, reducing county coppers, reducing the amount of money that county has to be able to spend, that they will have to, to be able to develop this, hoping it goes away. But if it doesn't, you know, we're seeing this initiative, I see it as a carryover from the war on drugs. The proponents can't help the lies and disinformation that they were taught, and I understand that, but I hear that with age comes wisdom. And what I know as a person who often makes mistakes is the worst thing that you can do is continue to deny your mistakes. There is an opportunity here for the proponents to pull this initiative after hearing the incredible impact that will be, maybe these weren't intended impacts, and please, I hope so, but if the intent is to destroy cannabis farmers and increase taxpayer costs that do not improve the best public interest, you know, is that what they want to have written about them in the Cal Poly Cannabis Studies history book as the three people who killed Humboldt County cannabis? Is that how you want to be remembered? Or do you want to be remembered for the people who made a mistake and came to the table and worked with the rest of your county?
30 seconds.
The rest of your... That's what I ask for, is to please look inside of your heart and pull this initiative. We can all sit down and talk. Supervisors want to talk? Anybody wants to talk? Cultivators want to talk? Let's talk. Let's make the changes we need to see for our community, our environment, and our cultivators. We don't, it doesn't need to go down like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next in the queue, we have 2565.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Nate Matson, speaking on my own behalf today. First off, I'd like to say thank you so much to all supervisors for your thoughtful and considered questions. I want to say thank you to Director Ford and planning staff for all the work that went into that staff report. I read both the initiative and the staff report, and I think that all the effort that went into that was well worth it, and I'm sorry that it has to go that way. So I would like to bring to your attention something that hasn't been focused on too much in this process, the modifications in the initiative of 4.9.1. That section, I think it's on about page three or four, I apologize for not having that handy, I'm out of the office today. That section is addressing coastal regulations as relates to inland and unincorporated areas of the county, and I'd just like supervisors to be attentive to that detail, I think it's really important. It is touched on in the staff report around page 23 or 24, section C or ND, but I think that's an important detail to just have in the forefront. With that said, I want to say that the proponents are our friends, they're our neighbors. One of these three folks is one of my nearest and dearest from back in the day. We, you know, spent a lot of time together. And I am just hoping that the concerns that are being voiced in this initiative are recognized as valid concerns, and that the proponents come to the table to discuss this with the supervisors, to discuss this with planning staff, and see if there's a way to resolve it, because the, what I believe are unintended consequences of this initiative are egregious, they are going to harm, do more harm than good, and I just really hope that, you know, the proponents of this initiative can find it in their heart to come to the table, have discussions, and see if there's a better path forward. Thank you so much for the time to speak.
Thank you. And next, we have 9009, star six to unmute. There you go.
Hello, thank you. My name is Chris Benos. I'm with Kina Gordon at Moonmade Farms, and first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Ford and the Board of Supervisors for hearing this initiative and putting out, voicing their concerns around it. We have been one of the first 50 permitting in Humboldt County, and over the years, we've worked with the county to represent small farmers here. And we would be one of those few cultivators that would be affected by any kind of 10,000 square foot limit. We're only 2,000 square feet over that limit, and even losing those 2,000 square feet would affect our business, along with many other small farmers that are in that 10,000 to 15,000 square foot range. We could also lose our potential for our solar grant. You know, granted, we've dreamed about and appreciate the county, the DCC for helping us with, and want to be stewards of the land, and want to be better stewards of the land and the environment in this community, and showed example of what a really awesome cannabis farm can be and represent Humboldt County with that, because Humboldt County has such a legacy around that, which we should all be really proud of. And this initiative can really hamper that. The cannabis is an economic pillar of this community, and it feels like this measure could really just put a squash on that and hinder how we can move forward in California and in the country as a landmark and represent what we are here, which is something to be really proud of, I think, for everybody involved. Thank you all for hearing us.
Thank you, commenter. And next is 5163. Star six to unmute. There, no, no. There, no, no, it dropped off. Okay, come back if you'd like. Next is 6754. There you go.
Thank you for taking my call. This is Brian from Bloxbury. I'm part of the, I have a cultivation license, I'm part of it, I would be affected by this. But what it comes down to, we really need to open up transparency in how the process works. In the beginning, we fought for market share against corporate people down in Southern California. And instead of us getting into the market, we had to battle the planning department for at least six years for some of these pre-existing. I think the frustration within the public came was when we saw new cultivation site of 10,000 square feet and more be passed with such ease. In 2017, you had 106 permits permitted. In 2018, there are 299 permits. How many of those are actually pre-existing? That would be a great answer for Director Ford to answer because what happened was through the whole process, we allowed pre-existing to be pushed behind, and we took new cultivation of these big grows, and we fast-tracked them. And it frustrated the public. As you go up AP, there's a new cultivation, we see 17 water tanks underneath the metal thing, and I'm sorry for this owner because he just wants to be part of the game, but it's appalling to see it as we drive up. We're a land of beauty. You destroyed our beauty within the land because of greed. Now, our industry, we don't fight each other in Humboldt County. We can grow as much as we want in Humboldt County, and we will never satisfy the needs of the world. The world wants cannabis. Humboldt County is going to be out of the game because we took new cultivation, fast-tracked it through, took all our pre-existing, pushed them back, and then we let them bait at half of our constituents. Now, we've got lawsuits against the abatement. What we need to do now is stop bickering, go to a plan, and start a new initiative. But you need to be transparent. You have to show any new cultivation site over 10,000 square feet, let the public see the whole process. When I go and look at all these APN numbers and look at these new cultivation sites, some of them got zoning permits in seven months, some of them got in eight months. If you come back to my pre-existing, 28 months to get a signed planner. That's unacceptable. So what you did was, you took a whole bunch of pre-existing and made them angry. That's why you had two people just comment that they signed this petition. You've literally destroyed Humboldt County and our biggest industry moving forward.
Thirty seconds.
I've done over with some consultants. If I group 100 co-op pre-existing farms, we are the 10th largest company in cannabis in the United States. So, our future is in limbo, and we need the Board of Supervisors to get a new initiative, be transparent to the public, and show them what is going on, and keep this initiative alive. Please, thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, commenter, and thank you, Dog, for your comments as well. So, next, we've got 0330 in the queue. Star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay, I'll keep this short. I agree with a lot of the other commenters. I just wanted to add that I think we should stop saying these are unintended consequences. I think the HCRI has spent lots of money, they know exactly what they want to achieve, and they don't want, they know it cannot be amended. I have a 10,000 square foot farm just passed Betsy Mark, and it's abundantly clear, after reading the report from the planning department, that this initiative would not support me and that the HCRI has no actual interest of working with anyone to develop a plan that would actually steer Humboldt County in a better way. I would like the Board to announce an opposition to the initiative and discuss the cost of litigation that would occur if this is voted in. I would like the Board to look into suing the HCRI for all of the misleading deceptive ways they collected signatures and created a mistrust in the way that the legislative process actually works. I think their tactics are insulting to us and all the hard work that's been done here in the planning department and by all of us. We know the county isn't rubber stamping permits, as Betsy has said. It took me personally six years and over, I don't know, $100,000 in reports from multiple state and local agencies to get approved. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you for taking your time to listen.
Thank you, commenter. And next, we have 2275. Star six to unmute. 2275, you're in the queue. And one last time, there you are. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry, my hands free. This is Kelly O'Rourke. I work in the industry, I live in Humboldt, own property in Humboldt, single parent, raising my daughter in Humboldt. I'm not going to repeat everything everyone else has said. I think it's, the staff did a great job at unpacking this initiative. I just wanted to really express my opposition, of course, and also express just my support for a collaborative effort in this community and working toward healing and reconciliation for everyone involved. And also just recognizing the, I don't know, the cultural work that we have to do to, you know, bring everybody into the fold and work together. So, I'm happy to volunteer my time. I founded a nonprofit here in town. I have visited over 50 regenerative cannabis farms just this last season, over 90 inspections total, so I've met a lot of these people that this is going to affect, and it's no good for them, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to speak with anybody, give information, and also, you know, whatever we can do to come to some kind of solution here. So, I really hope that, yeah. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have 2784. Star six to unmute. There you go.
Hi, my name is James Newer. I'm a roller fabricator, actually. Moved here from Michigan with my three kids a couple of years ago. And I've been privy to witness kind of what's happened in the farming community and how the Board of Supervisors has handled all of these difficult problems. I just want to offer some kudos to you guys. I'm glad to see that you're trying to do your best and being fair when you handle these things. The first thing I want to point out is 10,000 square feet keeps getting brought up a lot, and clearly there's a cap in this initiative, and it saddens me to hear other farmers bring up 10,000 square feet like it's a big thing. I just want to point out to everyone, 20,000 square feet is under half an acre, and there was a lot of talk of a one-acre cap for quite a while at the beginning of all this cannabis stuff. So I just wanted to point that out. The other thing I wanted to say is that it's very clear to me that this initiative is designed to kill the legal cannabis industry. I get the impression that the people who put it forth don't like cannabis. I'm assuming they didn't like illegal cannabis, they don't like legal cannabis. But they sure benefited from illegal cannabis for many years, from the families who cultivated cannabis illegally and risked their lives and their freedom to put food in their kids' mouths. And those communities benefited from schools and community centers and from the trimmers who came in every season and bolstered the economy. I live in Southern Humboldt. It looks like a bomb's gone off. I believe I've brought that up so many times I've called in to talk to you guys. It seems like there may have been some illegal activity around the acquiring of these signatures, misrepresentation. That is a fraud. I believe that should be looked into. Obviously, ethically, it sounds like the Board cannot come out against the initiative, but the individual members have the power to do so. And anything that the Board of Supervisors can do to illuminate to the public what the actual meaning behind the initiative is, I think should be done with as much fury as possible. And the last thing I want to say is cannabis cultivation is already enormously difficult. It's very expensive. It's become cost prohibitive for many small farms.
Thirty seconds.
And the more regulation that...
That is my fault. He may call back. I muted him on accident.
Okay, you can't unmute him right away?
I can try.
He could.
Give him one second.
If you're listening, 2784, you can, there you go. We're back. Sorry, we unmuted you.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
That's all right, I appreciate it. I just want to wrap up and say, I really appreciate it. You know, the amount of regulation of cannabis, on cannabis farmers is extreme, but the Board of Supervisors has done a lot to support the community and the industry, and I really just hope that you guys can do whatever you can to squash this. Thanks for the time.
Thank you very much, commenter. And next, we have 8496. Star six to unmute.
Hi, this is Laura Lassiter with the Southern Humboldt Business and Visitor Bureau, and thank you for this time. Thank you, Director Ford and staff, for your very detailed report. I will keep this brief. I have to, I guess, just say, tourism, tourism, tourism. The county and the cannabis industry needs the capacity to build tourism infrastructure and the ability to get public accommodation permits. If passed, the HCRI would prohibit any new tourism permits. In addition, the HCRI does not support the industry, the county, or the strategic framework for the County of Humboldt. The HCRI is detrimental on many levels to the County of Humboldt. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And thanks, a little one, too. It is a family affair, so 2223, you are next. Star six to unmute. There you go.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good afternoon, this is Craig Johnson, owner and operator of Up and Glow Farms in Southern Humboldt. Appreciate time from the supervisor and our entire community that has pored over these documents and come to realize what is happening here. I want to thank the planning department over the years diligently working with each and every cultivator through the way to help us get through the process. We've worked all this time and put all this energy in as a community, here, planning, inspections, and we're getting somewhere. We're getting somewhere as a community. I want to also mention that during one of these inspections, which we do have, Fish and Wildlife was very impressed with our farm, and they asked us to be part of one of their programs to highlight what cannabis can look like into the future. With that said, we are compliant farm certified, we're Dragonfly Earth Medicine Peer certified, we've worked hard to be stewards of the land over the years, before, after, and during legalization. That is never going to change. Our dream is to finally open up, to be able to have educational workshops and tours on our farm. We get reached out, ailing from all over the world, people that want to come and visit and learn. That would stop, that would all stop when this happens. I ask Betsy Mark and the other folks behind this initiative, please, pull this. You have the ability to stop all this. We want to be able to move forward, finally, with the support of our community and the support of our local government. Again, I ask you, please pull this. Thank you so much. Craig Johnson.
Thank you. And next, we have 0069. There you go.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much for having me. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for opening up dialogue for this, and thank you to Director Ford and the staff for doing such an extensive report on something that greatly and deeply impacts my life, my emotions. This is Melanie Johnson, I'm a 21-year Humboldt County resident, and I'm a 19-year Humboldt County landowner. I expressed my frustration on this fraudulent initiative back in November, and I am grateful for the experts in this county as they have confirmed what myself and many community members knew, that this initiative is fraudulent and it's designed to inflict harm and hurt on those it claims to protect. My early frustrations towards the creators of this initiative have turned to sadness. I cannot fathom, let alone imagine, spending the precious time I've been graciously given on this beautiful gift called life, thinking and planning and then executing presumptuous and sumptuous ideas that greatly and deeply impact others. And we've found out it does not seem to benefit anyone. The harm created by the designers of this initiative was premeditated. Harm is thoughtful and harm is continuous. The fact that my family and I have to defend our life and our property rights to an individual in the community, one who is geographically an hour and a half from our homestead, and one who we have done absolutely no harm to, it's beyond hurtful and beyond bizarre. This is my life, this is my family, this is my home, and this is my state-licensed legal business. I'm again expressing that those who would be impacted by this initiative will experience harm, and the experts have concluded that this is true. I am confident that my family and my community will continue to hold dead staffs against those who wish to inflict harm against us, and I'm confident that the county will continue to support us in our defense. I'm asking the creators of this initiative that you hear this truth, that you hear my truth...
Thirty seconds.
...you hear the community's truth. And this is the truth that has been confirmed by the county, and we ask that the organizers of this initiative to withdraw it once. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have 3053. Star six to unmute. Star six. Last chance, 3053. This is your opportunity. If you're listening to the audio on the video feed, it's delayed. Turn it off. Okay, 3053, we're going to move on to the next caller, and that would be 8497. There you go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you, everybody. This is Jeff Churchill, owner of Kinsey Ridge Farms, basically in the middle of nowhere in the snow.
Yeah.
It's great to be here to talk with everybody, and I appreciate the time that the planning department and the supervisors have spent to look at this initiative and actually give a true concise presentation of actually what it is going to entail for our county and our local cannabis community. We have numerous compliance agreements with the planning department, and it doesn't seem attainable anymore if this initiative moves through, for the environment, for our farm, for the county, for anybody. It's just, it's not going to be attainable. Our choice probably would be to shut the farm down. And we were given grant money from the county or from the state. That grant money wouldn't be spent. We would probably just hand it back. It is for water improvements that bring water from a non-impacted cannabis zone to an impacted cannabis zone. So, giving great environmental benefits, again, that would not happen. We have a solar grant, which would add a structure. It would not happen. We do live on a category four road, but these other pieces just would make it impossible to bring our farm into compliance. So again, we're going back in time... So again, we're going back in time, as numerous people have stated. The Planning Department, the supervisors, I've worked with a lot of people down there. Everything has gone very well. It's taken a lot of time, and we've faced a lot of hurdles, but we're there. We're struggling, but so is everybody else. And I really feel that the proponents of this are looking to save their own little community. They don't want to look out and see cannabis. But what are they going to attack next? They could look out and see
Thirty seconds.
a sheep farm next to them. So let's conclude. If anyone is listening and you feel you are misinformed in signing this document, signing this initiative, please reach out to your supervisor and voice your opinion. This is going to mean a lot during litigation. And I feel that the people who built this initiative aren't ready to
Thank you, Commenter. That's three minutes. Goes quick. Stay safe in that snow. And the last hand up we have in Zoom is two four zero three. Star six to unmute.
Good afternoon, Tisha Machadi, Compliance Advisor. Worked with cannabis farmers in the community for the past seven years. I'm glad that I was able to catch this on the agenda today. My schedule is super slammed, but this is really important. This is kind of old news, I feel like, you know, it's definitely something that might have been more important four years ago when we were looking at, you know, possible large operations, choking out watersheds and creating environmental harm, but I think we've done a really good job of offsetting a lot of that damage to the point where it's crippled our community. So, you know, I'd really like to see this pulled. I don't think there's a need for it at this point. I think we need to figure out how to recover our community, and maybe an initiative that focuses on that is a little bit more of a priority at this point. So I will conclude at that. Thank you for all the work and doing the due diligence on looking at this, and I hope we can move forward from here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we have three zero five three, welcome back. Star six to unmute. Ooh, that was quick. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Thomas Mulder here. I just want to confirm, you can hear me, Chair?
Yes, we can.
So I haven't heard all the comments. I've been driving in and out of service. I think you all know where I stand. I feel that the county should do whatever it can legally do within its power. I understand it can't take a motion against this initiative, but I feel it should do as much as possible that it's legally allowed to do, and maybe even file a lawsuit against the creators of this initiative for misuse of taxpayer money, because a lot of these signatures were acquired via false information, false claims. And if I was going to take a guess, I'd say the county's got probably $100,000 tied up into the report you see before you today in fast time between November and today. I think that's a big misuse of taxpayer dollars. I don't think those are things that we should be utilizing taxpayer dollars on. I think we should be utilizing that for anything, maybe more grants or something like that. I will say firstly, I'm thankful that I installed an extra $100,000 gallons of water storage before this came out, so it sounds like as long as I don't need to change anything, I might be okay. I do hold more than one permit, so I don't know how I'm going to deal with that part. And I guess, you know, my daughter's 21, so maybe I can put one of them in her name. I really don't know, but this is the worst thing for Humboldt County, and I have no idea how long, but please do whatever you can to fight against this. And if you don't stand to fight against this, please resign from this board, because I don't feel that it's, I just don't really think that you would care about Humboldt County. Look at the trickle-down economic effects that have taken place since the cannabis industry has been in a downturn. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Commenter. And next, and this is the last hand up in Zoom at this point. Last time I said that, three more hands came up. So this is seven zero zero three. Star six to unmute. There you go. Welcome. Go ahead. Seven zero zero three, you are unmuted. Give us your thoughts. Hmm, maybe you're driving as well. After this, we're going to go to the people in the room, and that'll be it for the Zoom. So I'll ask you one more time, seven zero zero three, who now just disappeared. Okay, well, that's it in Zoom. So now we're going to bring it back here to the room, and please come forward, and if you want to share your name, that's great, and let us know what you think. You've got three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Supervisors and Staff. My name is Ross Gordon. I'm the Policy Director with Humboldt County Growers Alliance, where the trade association represents licensed cannabis operators in Humboldt County. Want to appreciate the Board for directing staff to produce this report. Want to thank the Planning Department for providing a very thorough, comprehensive, and in our view, really accurate report on the effects of this initiative, were it ever to pass. We had a number of comments going through substantive lewits in this initiative. I don't feel that's necessary. I think it's been covered by a range of other folks. And so I wanted to talk really primarily about collaboration and about that sort of principle for moving forward. We do a lot of collaboration as HCGA. I personally, you know, am really committed to collaboration, understanding many political issues, particularly cannabis, are very contentious issues. There are many different perspectives, there are many different stakeholders. We have to be able to talk to each other and hear each other's perspective. That said, collaboration, at least from my perspective, is very difficult in this case, because this policy has been analyzed very thoroughly. This policy has now been in the public view for over a year. It was sent to the Humboldt County Office of Elections in March. It was not publicly available before that, but it was after that. It has been analyzed by us, by lots of small farmers, now by the Planning Department, and everyone's reached the same conclusion, which is that this is broken policy and it's harmful policy. And so that's very clear at this point. I don't think there's a lot of controversy at this point. And in my experience working on policy, when there is a harmful policy, you are not committed to supporting it at any point. It's very possible to not double down and pull this policy. And if we're going to have a conversation collaboratively about what collaborative changes to the ordinance might look like, it would be very helpful to not have this hanging over our heads as something that we all agree is bad policy that's going to hurt people. I don't know how we have a truthful, honest conversation with the proponents if we can't start from that place, that is based on comprehensive analysis that's been done. And so the most helpful thing for collaboration that can happen, in my view, is for the proponents to pull this initiative and then engage in that open and public process on what changes need to be made to the ordinance. I want to make a few technical comments very briefly. We sent a letter to the Supervisors on this question of the Board taking a formal opposed position. It had a link to a document from Institute of Local Government that suggested the governing body of a jurisdiction may take an opposed position. My understanding, reading that, that is distinct from the county taking an opposed position, but the governing body, meaning the Board of Supervisors, may
Thirty seconds.
That could be wrong. That was my own, our own research that we were doing, so please confirm that, but I wanted some clarity on that. And then I was hoping potentially the Planning Department could elaborate on some of what they put forward in terms of conflicts between the general plan and the initiative text, as well as impacts on coastal zone issues, and whether that would require further amendments to either the general plan or the initiative itself were this to pass to resolve some of those conflicts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, members of the Board and staff here. My name is Paul Hagan. I'm an environmental lawyer. I live and work in Arcata. I've lived in Humboldt County for 23 years. I was an environmental prosecutor for 11 years, eight of which I spent here in Humboldt County as an environmental prosecutor. I was a city attorney for Trinidad for four years and for Blue Lake for a little while. Had a lot of experience in public service, public law, and I understand what's facing you and our community now. I've also had a lot of cannabis clients since 2016. I am an environmental attorney as well as an environmental lawyer, and I have a lot of land use experience, as well as litigation. There's a conundrum that exists within any type of environmental compliance, particularly when you're in a dangerous area. One of the dilemmas I always faced as an environmental prosecutor was when I was going after companies who were legitimate and had kept records, and their records incriminated themselves. And then I had to use their evidence against them, and that was a problem for me, because all those people who weren't in compliance were going scot-free and harder to prove. And so that was just part of the gig, part of the game that I had and had to work in. And you've heard some people allude to that already today, and that's not an unusual thought. People understand this intuitively, business people generally. An issue that I've not yet heard that I'd like to bring to your attention is that of vested rights. Vested rights. And this is for county council and other people to instruct you on far more than I, but the idea is that people have been issued permits, even if they're not fully completed, if they have, they gain legitimate expectations after they put substantial investments of their time and money under their property pursuant to a government grant of authority. When a permit's been issued, even though it's incomplete or temporary or something, and people start pouring money into their land, especially sunk costs, that they cannot retrieve, and later on, if something comes along and removes this permit, they have a violation of their property rights. This is a land use issue. So it's a vested rights, it's a doctrine in the law. So really what you've got to worry about, among other things with this initiative, is what it's going to do to corrupt your ordinances and all the people who are acting for both the first and the second ordinance. This is a huge problem. So I think it's a terrible initiative. That's my personal opinion, but as an attorney, and if I was to counsel the Board, which I'm not doing, to just urge people to think about, there is a vested rights issue for all of your constituents here. They own property, they pay taxes, they're doing everything right, and they're getting hammered now after all this other stuff that's happened throughout the years. So please think of that and do whatever you can to bring this to bear in your decision. And I always want to thank people who give themselves the public service, all of you elected people here today and those who serve you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can do this thing. No clapping, please. Thanks. Yes, welcome.
My name is Riley Morrison. I'm a community member and small cannabis farmer in Willow Creek. I have two asks. Supervisors, please formally oppose this initiative individually. Proponents, Betsy Watson and Mark Thurman, please withdraw this initiative from the ballot so that we can work together and develop policy that works for the community, environment, and cultivators. If this initiative passes, it will destroy my ability to implement my business plan and will wither our farm down to its bones. My wife and I cultivate environmentally mindful practices, raise our sons with integrity in the rural county, and invest our time serving our greater community. We designed our farm business with a phase-build approach, allowing buffers through poor market conditions and time to accumulate the capital to develop, as we have never taken investment, and there is no other way. Over the next two years, we plan to build a barn, allowing a new roofline, increased solar collection, develop farm stay and ecological tourism components. If this initiative is passed, this type of development would be considered cultivation expansion, requiring us to reduce our cultivation by 65% to implement, rendering the hundreds of thousands of dollars invested into infrastructure, electrical infrastructure, and other improvements useless and a total loss. If this bad policy is to pass, the proponents' lasting legacy will be the wasted taxpayer dollars spent funding the increased time demand on county staff to over-process cultivation permits as the new system boxes and suffocates the current cannabis farmer into complete extinction. To the proponents, if your intent, as I quote, "to transition the industry to a small-scale environmentally cannabis farmer," please see that there are no gimmicks in this staff report, and that the only way to affirm your stated goals is to end the support of the small farmer and the environment, is to withdraw this initiative from the ballot. Otherwise, as the language stands, it appears that the H C R I was created with malice and intent to destroy legal cannabis cultivators, and at best demonstrates the proponents have no moral integrity and have duped 7,000 voters with fraud who signed this petition to protect the cultural and economic assets of this community.
Thank you. And next.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
My name is Polly Kinsinger, and I'm a small cultivator in Eastern Humboldt County. I'm here today to request that, based on the very thorough report submitted to you by the County Planning Department, that you officially oppose the H C R I as written and submitted. Due to the instability of our industry, my farm has gone from 25,000 square feet of cultivation to just over 4,000 square feet under two small cottage licenses on over 200 acres of land. That's 4,000 square feet on 8,712,000 square feet of land. It's a really small little amount of cultivation on my property. I steward all of that land, not just my cultivation portion. If this initiative is permitted to go forward in the misinformation to, sorry, it contains, convinces the public that it is good for small farmers, it will lose, I will lose what is left of my farm and my way of life. I've always taken the environment into account when I made any changes to my land for cultivation. I cut no trees in the white and black oak forest, and I was careful to cover any disturbed ground to minimize any silt discharge. My father had a road cut in the property in 1970, and over the years, it deteriorated and washed away in parts. When I developed the property for cultivation, I improved the shape of the road, added rock, and put culverts. In 10 years I have lived on the property, none of the road has deteriorated since I've been there. Yes, there are bad apples that have come and made us collectively look bad, but many of them have gone. Most of us who remain run our farms ethically and with the environment and community in mind. We've taken a huge hit to our industry in this county, but the remarkable group of resilient people I am blessed to call my community stand strong and are here to tell you that we want to survive. We want to continue to be stewards of our environment and our communities. Please do not allow this initiative to go any further and guarantee the complete destruction of this admittedly odd but important legacy of Humboldt County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, Director Ford, and staff. I want to thank you guys, first of all, for the excellent report you guys produced. My name is Indy Riggs. I'm a cannabis farmer down in Stafford. My garden is a Humboldt 3,000-square-foot craft garden. In the year and a half since I completed the regulatory process and received my cultivation license, I have already had three inspections from three separate agencies, proof in fact that you guys are doing your jobs and there is a regulatory process we all must follow. In addition to these, I've also had voluntary inspections for different environmental certification programs like Sun and Earth. I am not alone in this. All cultivators of cannabis in Humboldt County experience this. It is a part of the process. As stated in this report presented from planning staff, cultivators have been whittled down from a peak of 15,000 independent gardens to a little over 1,000, the last of us standing, some of whom are in this room, my colleagues. We are the wheat separated from the chaff. We are still here because we are community members, because we love Humboldt County, and because we are stewards of the environment. The claims in this initiative of our county being overrun by large-scale cultivators and the proponents' desire to save the small farmer are misleading, and they are simply false. The proposed overhaul of local regulations in this initiative would hamstring small cultivators like myself, inhibiting my ability to adapt and change to changing market conditions or to add improvements to my property or operation. And they would also put a stranglehold on our Planning Department. The cost to process 1,000 annual license renewals to the citizenry and the taxpayers of Humboldt County alone should be enough to tell us all that this initiative is not only terrible for all cultivators in Humboldt County, but terrible for all residents of Humboldt County. It is not too late to retain the world-famous name Humboldt County has built for itself and its reputation for the best cannabis in the world. There is momentum building for craft cannabis. There is momentum building in the consumer market for ecologically sound cannabis, and there is momentum building to form a cooperative sector in the cannabis industry. As a member of this community, I long for the day the division some of us still feel in their hearts would finally melt away, and people like myself would at last be greeted with open arms rather than shunned and treated as a criminal. This initiative sadly furthers this divide, we feel, and I solemnly beg the proponents to pull this initiative and for you, Supervisors, to do everything you can
Thirty seconds.
in your power to publicly oppose it or disoppose it. Thank you for the time, and thank you all for your support.
Thank you. And next. Welcome.
Hi there. My name is Sandy DeLuca, and I'm a local real estate agent here in Humboldt County. So during my time in real estate, doing real estate in this county, I've had my feet on hundreds and hundreds of farms. And what I, what I talk to people about is I talk to people about the value of their property because I talk to people about the value of their property because of the assets on their property. And those assets over the last several years have people been putting in their life savings to put in culverts, to correct roads, to, you know, move things over and do all the things that they're, that they're obligated to do in order to have a legal cannabis farm. I'd also like to mention that one of the things I tell people when they call me on the phone is I say, well, when we opened up our permitting, when our deadline was December of 2016, and our county basically got 10 years' worth of work in three or four months. And so that means that a lot of people aren't finished doing the permitting process. And so, so, so that's really important to me. And, and I experience it with the sellers, and I experience it with the buyers, because I'm reminding them of the things they have to look for and the costs they're going to have to have. And I'm also putting myself on the line saying, these are the rules that we've already created, and these are the rules we're following. And I'm always very afraid because those are changing. And if something goes wrong, they're going to come back and say that I was wrong, or I cheated them, or something like that. So that's, that's something I'm really aware of throughout the process. I'd also like to bring up two more things. I'd like to say that the gentleman that had his stand at all these different locations, I went up and spoke to him several times. And as I spoke to him, I was very kind and let him give his presentation to me. And when he gave his presentation to me, it was clear. I know I know what I'm talking about, and these gentlemen here all see me in that county office all the time, asking questions, because I try to make sure I know what I'm talking about. That gentleman did not know what he was talking about, and neither did the people who had, were there gathering signatures. They were misleading. I don't, I don't know why, when, what, if they're doing it on purpose. They hate, obviously, it was obvious to me that they hated cannabis. It's, it felt. But they were definitely misleading, and they were getting signatures. And my fear is, is that they got over 7,000 signatures. If this is allowed to go to the vote, how many people are going to walk up there and, and, and read the little blurb and just say yes? If, if this goes that far, we have an obligation to inform the public before they take an action like that, because it, we, I heard somebody say a bomb went off in Garberville?
Thirty seconds.
I see that. I, I can't sell houses in Bridgeville. And I tell people that that was a company town, and the company is shut down. And so the value of your own home is dependent upon the people, what, what the economic level of the people in that community. So the value, if they can't pay for that mortgage, the value has, the price has to come down. So, so this, what is happening in our county is going to affect all of us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. And next? Welcome.
Hello. Thank you, Board. I really appreciate your thoughtfulness always. Thank you, staff. That report was incredibly detailed. It brought up things I had not realized. I don't want to be redundant. So much has already been said. As a farmer, my name's Dylan Matole. I have a farm in Honeydew. I would be affected adversely on a lot of levels by various things in this. There's just no question about that. Staff has told me they are the ones that would be affecting me, so I believe them. It, you know, here we are again. It's like, once again, I'm standing in front of you, fighting a proponent who, or fighting an adversary, really, who's coming at just my ability to be legal, run a business, and be compliant. It's exhausting. I don't think the general public understands as business owners what we have to deal with on a daily basis. We have weekly calls, bi-weekly calls. I'm on multiple boards, committees, just to stay in business. You know, there's 7,000 people signed this. I have not heard a single call-in or a single person, there's still some people behind me, maybe somebody will speak in favor of it. Where are the proponents? They have, they are not even here. So there's conversation I keep hearing. You need to talk to them. I've reached out to them. I've sent emails. There is no response. They don't want to talk to us. They are not even here today. They wrote this initiative. They've put us through this process of having to deal with this, and they didn't even have the respect to show up. That's offensive. I will just say that. You know, Rex, you brought up something that I think should not be missed. They had, this stemmed from a project in front of their property that they could see. They went through the process. They appealed it. They fought that owner. They won. He was taken from 40,000 square feet of outdoor down to 10,000 square feet in the ground, outdoor regenerative plan is what he was going to do. He hasn't done it. It, it, it's not even financially viable. They should be happy. They should say, look, this process worked. There are problems pre-existing like Robby Tenario mentioned. There are things that happened in this process that weren't ideal. Part of the reason why so many of these new permits got improved beside, in front of the pre-existing is because they were coming down to prime ag. That's what the ordinance called for. That's what the push was. People wanted to bring it out of the hills down. That's why the permits got approved quicker on those places. And it is sometimes unsightly, and it is a change to your neighborhood, but this is Humboldt County. We grow weed. Somebody sent me today a link that everybody should go look at. Levi Strauss on their website is selling a shirt that says Humboldt. That's who we are. That brand, that, that mega corporation is putting out there to sell shirts with our name on it is not because of anything except weed. That's what built that brand.
Thank you. And next? Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Nathan Whittington. I own Ladybug Herbal Sanctuary. My grandma loves the name. And I, I'm here to tell you that I'm a pre-existing environmental steward of sustainable cannabis agriculture. Everybody in this room is. Everyone who's pre-existing, the 739 farms who came out of the dark, came and worked with John Ford and the planning department to get our properties environmentally stable, worked with CDFW, worked with all these agencies. The collaborative effect of Humboldt County cannabis farmers is very clear. We like to openly communicate. We invite all of you to our farms. The report that Director Ford and the planning department put out is quite comprehensive, and it sheds a light on the progress we have attained so far, and it highlights opportunities to improve. You know, I'll say one thing that's positive about this initiative is that the goal, the intent seemed appropriate. It's just the execution that was done incorrectly. And so we need to take the time now to address that, change our stance, and come up with better solutions. You know, one thing I want to point out is when we did the environmental impact report, looking at the baseline of the county operations, 15,000 grows, tearing, taking water, destroying roads, all of the issues. Now we're down to about 1,200. That is a net reduction in the baseline impacts that cannabis has had in our community. Mission accomplished. Now it's time for us to take that mission and redirect it into expanding the opportunities for our cannabis cultivation operators. There's two things we can do right now, and there's a third question, or something I would like to ask. One thing that wasn't brought up in the report is the implementation costs, the enforcement costs. I think our voters need to know exactly how much this initiative will cost them at the end of the day, because they're the ones who are going to have to pay for it. And I think this board needs to seriously look at coming out with a statement of opposition, in whatever manner that's allowed by law. And the third thing I want to say is it's clear that we need to move forward with some new changes to the ordinance. And, you know, this report showed that, everybody here in the room showed that, our community's talking about that.
Thirty seconds.
So maybe it's time for us to direct staff to start collaborating with the cannabis community, look for ways to improve our ordinance, and come up with a competing initiative. Those are our options right now. I urge your board to find the best path forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, Board. Hi, staff. My name's Sequoia Hudson. I thank you for your time and all the work that's been done on this matter. I am here actually to just, to really support a lot of what's been said. I really appreciate what the previous speaker just talked about. He did tap for a moment on what I wanted to just come up here and say today, and that really has to do with the intent of the whole ordinance to begin with, and also to briefly talk about getting here today. We've all went through a very collaborative process over the years, since prior to 2018, when it was drafted and written into stone. And we want to continue in that collaborative process. And unfortunately, this cannabis reform initiative did not engage in that process and that collaborative spirit and work with the people that had already worked so hard to do this. There's actually a section in our ordinance as written that we worked on together at the beginning, and I just wanted to read it, because it is the purpose and intent of our land use ordinance and why it's here. The purpose of this section is to establish land use regulations concerning the commercial cultivation, processing, manufacturing, distribution, testing, and sale of cannabis for medicinal or adult use within the county of Humboldt in order to encourage safe, reasonable, and responsible growth that reduces negative impacts on our community and environment, increases public awareness and community health and safety while creating a clear and attainable path for operators to follow and authorities to enforce. These regulations are intended to ensure the public health, safety, and welfare of residents of the county of Humboldt, visitors to the county, persons engaged in regulated commercial cannabis activities, including their employees, neighboring property owners, and end-users of medicinal or adult-use cannabis, to protect the environment from harm resulting from cannabis activities, including but not limited to streams, fish, and wildlife, residential neighborhoods, schools, community institutions, and tribal cultural resources, to ensure the security of state-regulated medicinal or adult-use cannabis, and to safeguard against the diversion of state-regulated medicinal or adult-use cannabis for purposes not authorized by law. To this end, these regulations identify where the county, where in the county the various types of commercial cannabis activities can occur, and specify what type of permit is required, the application process, and the approval criteria that will apply. I really implore the proponents of this initiative to engage in the process we've all engaged in, to accomplish this purpose and intent collaboratively and together, to continue pursuing these goals. With that said, I hope that we can figure out a path to be able to make that happen.
Thank you. Next? Welcome.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Nadalyn Delap, Executive Director, Humboldt County Growers Alliance. And I'm really grateful that I just had the opportunity to go after Sequoia and Nate, because the three of us have been in these supervisor chambers for more than eight years, since the beginning of 2015, when MMRS A was becoming an idea. We have engaged meaningfully through a transparent, collaborative, democratic process. Not one time, two times. We've also been to I don't even know how many Planning Commission hearings. This room, when we were not able to come here during COVID, was kind of sad. I missed it. But this is the Hall of Democracy in Humboldt County. There is an already existing collaborative, transparent process that we've all been going through. The proponents of the H-CRI have not done that. They did not engage the industry. Frankly, they didn't even engage the environmental community, which is why Epic submitted a letter of opposition earlier today. They have circumvented collaborative process. They are holding our industry hostage. We ask them, Betsy, Mark, please, drop this. This is not good policy. We are not making this up. This is backed by fact, and it is utterly destructive. The fact that they are not here, that they have not called in, that they're not here to defend their document, is contemptuous. The fact that on your agenda, that you may have to try to negotiate and get in this ad hoc committee, when they've already said basically, go kick rocks, and then they haven't showed up here. And Rex's famous statement, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. Right? They're not here. We are here. We've been here with you, and we need your help. We need your support. We need you to oppose this initiative. We need you to educate the public. We need ongoing education, because clearly the public does not understand what we have been through for the last eight years. They think if I was just a regular person signing that initiative, that we hadn't done all this work, because, well, they misinterpreted, they didn't bring everything to the table, they'd think like we didn't even have any cannabis ordinances. That's not okay. So their 7,000-person leverage point is BS. That's not okay. And they're not calling in. Neither are they. Our industry is here. They've made it through the snow. They've been spending their time, and we have done everything we possibly can over the last seven, eight years to be part of this community and be proud of it. We do have something worth fighting for, and we need your support today. Please oppose the Humboldt Cannabis Reform Initiative. Thank you.
It's nice to be here. Suzanne from Margro Advisors. We sent a deck to you folks, and hopefully you've had a chance to look through it. A response from that deck, when we send it out to all of our farmers, a 40-year-old, a 40-year resident. She owns a long-running florist business in a small cannabis plot. And her only response was, just surreal. Can this get any more heartbreaking? I couldn't say it any differently. I feel the same way. I was approached to sign the initiative, but I had already read it. And maybe I'm a bit naive, but I thought, wow, I can really help them understand the flaws in their initiative. I didn't come with any other agenda to help them understand. I was told that I was uninformed, and I was unreasonable. I have worked in the trenches for seven years for this community, for our local farmers, and for our economy. We have lived and breathed helping this process. And it cuts deep. They are not people to be reasoned with or negotiated with. Margro Advisors recommends that this board develops their own initiative. And I think we should call it the Real Small Farmer Initiative. We hope the supervisors will oppose this ballot and consider its own ballot initiative, which can even correct issues and resolve ongoing challenges, such as inadequate propagation area for small craft farmers. Let them be competitive in California. Don't hold them back. I have just a few more seconds. My phone is getting blown up by, by our employees back at the office. So I just need to honor them. I was told that election code 911, 9111, says that this report from planning was due not later than 30 days after the petition is certified. Under 9118, the board only had two choices: adopt the ordinance or order an election. Not sure what we're doing here.
Thirty seconds.
So I cannot confirm that this is accurate information, but I trust my staff enough to bring it up here. We need to do an initiative of our own, and I do believe, coming in here, even before reading those two codes, I do believe that that is our solution that we should move forward with. We cannot have an ad hoc committee and waste our time with people who...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dashil. I have licensed cultivation here in Humboldt County and live on my farm in Dinsmore full-time. As a farmer, I have countless concerns with this bill. The first is it wouldn't allow us to expand our solar in any capacity. This means we can't add to our existing system annually, as we have the funds to do so. This means we'll never have full sustainability on the farm. It would also not allow us to expand our existing rain catchment systems or add additional rain catchment tanks, allowing us to forbear and not use our existing permanent well during the summer. It would also not allow us to form a co-op and hold a multi-licensed facility like processing and distribution on the same property. This prevents us and other small farms from working together, and results in a loss of revenue, not only for us farmers, but for the county as well. A new concern of mine after listening to this meeting is that my cultivation license would also be in jeopardy at the time of its renewal, even though we've been going through the permitting process with the county on our pre-existing cultivation since December of 2016. Our county is one of the only counties in the state with restrictions on nursery space as well. We need more support from the county to be competitive and to thrive. We don't need more restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. And looks like our final speaker. Welcome.
My name is Bill Damron, and I have Sodfather Farms in Willow Creek. I moved here in 1977. I've been in this industry for 43 years. In 2016, I decided, I think the best thing for me to do is try to go legal and try to improve my county and our way of life as a family. Through a symbiotic relationship with the county and the planning department, we've gone through the complete process. It's been a struggle and difficult, but we pulled it off. It's been a struggle and difficult, but we pulled it off. I think that when we all started this and voted all legal, we all thought that the county would profit from this, that it would be a better thing for our county, that we would get revenues, that we would get tourism, that it would be a better place. This initiative is two steps forward and one step back. I think that all the supervisors here today have made a good point and have represented us well, and I think that you have good intentions, as well as you, John. I want to thank you very much for listening to me. I'm sure that you can hear the passion in my voice. Everything has already been said by many people in this room, many I know already. Thank you very much, once again.
Thank you. And one more speaker. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Colin Adams from Willow Creek. I'm the owner and operator of Sun Gold Flat in Willow Creek and also Bigfoot Cannabis Company. I've worked hard my whole life to get where I am today, and I've invested everything in my local economy and community, and this initiative would put me out of business. The only farms left now are the most responsible farms. The green rush is over. The cultivators that this initiative supposedly targets are pretty much gone. The proponents of this initiative want to destroy this industry. I think that's pretty obvious. This initiative is not good for anyone. It's not workable for the county, obviously. It would destroy the farms, and it doesn't work for the proponents, because it doesn't achieve their stated goals. If you signed this initiative, you either didn't read and understand its implications, or if you did, and you want to destroy the industry, but I don't think this is the intention of most of the people who signed it. And if you did sign it, you should read the staff report. I asked the board to oppose this initiative and pursue litigation to stop it. And I asked this board to protect what's left of this industry, the people here before you, because we are the industry. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Another commenter? Welcome.
Hi, guys. Thank you. I'm just here to show face as another farmer that would be negatively impacted by this. I don't need to repeat everything that's been said, but I can't get more soil, I can't expand my solar, I can't get more water tanks, I can't even build a house to live comfortably on my property, which would suck. It also shuts down. The co-op that we're trying to form to have community cooperation, like to all work together, also, just kind of in general, this gives every other county a competitive advantage over us. We're already struggling, so why do it? Like, I really like the idea of just rejecting it. If you guys can do that, please just do it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Excellent. Well, I very much appreciate all the commenters, and thank you all for being as concise as you could. You've left us some good time to be able to discuss and make some decisions, so I'll bring it back to the board. But first, Director Ford, did you want to provide any comments, clarifications, et cetera, to what you've heard here today?
I'd just like to say two things. One thing to one of the commenters who mentioned the fable of pre-existing. I would invite that person to come in, love to meet with the person, and walk through the cultivation area verification process that we've gone through.
Okay.
I mean, because we do have records in the file showing what the pre-existing cultivation was, and anybody who's been through that knows what a painful process that's been.
Seventy percent of them, right?
That's right. Actually, it's a little more than 70%, but...
Okay.
The thing, the other thing I wanted to say is that we had language in the presentation today that I probably took out and shouldn't have, but the costs relative to cannabis permitting and inspections and renewals are borne by the applicant. So one of the real downsides here isn't so much what it's going to cost the public, but the cost of regulatory compliance for the farmer. And at some point, that gets to a point where it's no longer feasible to do the activity, because the cost of compliance is so high. And so that's one of the real dangers here, and I just, I just wanted to point that out.
Great. Thank you very much. And I had Supervisor Arroyo with her hand up, and then Supervisor Bone, I know, wanted to say something, and then Bushnell. So, back to the board.
Thank you to everyone who spoke up and shared their perspectives. I know this is very hard. And I also wanted to share, and I, for the, you know, for full transparency, I forwarded these emails that were received. I read some emails from the proponents of this initiative on the break, and they were forwarded to our Deputy Clerk of the Board and for inclusion down the line, so everyone can see them. But they did come in, because one of the proponents said that they're snowed in and have limited connectivity where they are. So, take that for what it is. I have, I'm sorry? They, they may be listening right now, or they may not be, I'm not sure, but for whatever reason, they are not able to be here and calling in, and that had to do with the weather, apparently. So, I will say that they both expressed willingness to meet and to talk and to go through some of their understanding of the definitions, as well as, neither of them overtly stated that they would be willing to consider withdrawing the initiative, and I don't think that, you know, that's the, I wouldn't ask either of them to say that at this moment in time, until the, their understanding was that the ad hoc committee was going to reach out to them and going to meet, and they expressed interest in doing that. So, I just wanted to share that with everyone here, that they're still willing to converse about it. What that exactly looks like, I really don't know. But I, I see that we have very limited options, and I want to confirm with staff that my understanding is correct, that we can provide neutral information on the pros and cons of this in public outreach, and that if someone else wanted to propose an initiative following a similar process, that could happen, but that our options are to provide information on the impacts of this in a neutral manner. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. And to clarify my comment earlier, the board as a body can take a position of opposition or support. However, the juncture that you're at today is to develop the ad hoc, to go gain community feedback, and those efforts should not be construed as advocacy one way or the other. The ad hoc could, after speaking with the proponents and continuing engagement with the community, choose to take a position of support or opposition, could agendize that at a public meeting to have that discussion. So, that clarification, my concern is with the ad hoc veering into some level of advocacy.
Thank you for that clarification. So, I will say that I feel like I can have, I could participate in this discussion. Obviously, both of the proponents felt comfortable reaching out to me after I made that statement about collaboration, which I appreciate. And since we do have limited options here, you know, I would, I would state that I'm willing to be part of those conversations if we can get to something productive with them. And, you know, I don't, yeah, I think I'll just leave it there for now. I don't have, I don't think I have a perspective that would keep me from participating in those conversations effectively.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
I'd make a motion, and I'm going to have to look at counsel, could we have an ad hoc committee of Mr. Arroyo and John Ford? Because then we'll have the knowledge at the table also, because I'm, I'm reading the report here today, and this is unquestionably, and just so you know, I'm 110% opposed to this, as this sits right now. And I, I wish they could have been here today. I see they can email and things, but I wish they could. They knew this was on here. My, my, my problem being is, 7,000 people signed this under a pretense. Two people today did, two of the signers apologized for signing it because they were misled. So I'm seeing a common theme, that nobody, everybody was opposed to this the way it So unless this changes drastically, there's, I don't think this can be met in the middle of the road, and I just, I just, from the tone of the email that we got, and I'm glad that they're reaching out to you, I don't think they're going to want me 50/50 either. And 50/50 just probably kills everybody anyway. So, I, I would, if you guys want to go for it, that'd be fine, but, I mean, I don't think we're going, I don't know if an ad hoc is going to get where you want to be. I think what's going to happen is we're going to end up in the courts, and the courts are going to have to decide, and I think it's a weak enough, I think it's a weak enough riding, and with what we've come up with, I don't know if it will support. But I, I applaud you for the effort, and, and go forth.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. So, if I could clarify, an ad hoc would be two supervisors and Director Ford. I'd like to throw my name in, also. I'm very interested. I, I had talked to Betsy when the initiative came to our board, and had told her I would be contacting her to view some farms in the spring, and she was very open to that. So, I, I also would be interested. As the initiative stands right now, I can tell you I'm opposed to it, because it's so detrimental to so many farmers. But I am very hopeful that maybe some collaboration, as she stated in an email, we can maybe get there. But I am interested in that.
Okay, great. So, Supervisor Bone, and then Arroyo.
I just want to clarify. I'm not opposed to this just because of the farmer, sorry. I'm opposed to what this is going to do to the economy, what this is going to do to the environment. If you do not already see, we are down how much in our sales tax? And 38% down in nursery? So, I mean, and some of that's going to, you know, none of that's going to come back if this goes through. And so, and the environment, this is, it's not like a lot of these people, no offense, are going to just get out of the business, they're going to go back into the illicit market as before. There are so many options that are bad in this, and then the end result are the farmers are going to take the brunt of it. But the environment, our economy, and I, I will add, I will make the motion to put Mr. Arroyo, Supervisor Arroyo, Supervisor Bushnell, and John Ford on the ad hoc, and wish you well.
So that's basically staff recommendation with two names made to it? And so we have a motion and a second. For the discussion, I've got Supervisor Arroyo, and then back to Bushnell on the queue. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. I did feel that it was worth stating that, you know, I, I was that, I was campaigning at the same time, I was overlapping with some of, you know, the folks who were out talking about this initiative, and in no way was I campaigning for or against it, but I was out at a lot of, like, farmers' markets and stuff like that, and could see people sit down and read it from the clipboard. So, while the impacts were likely not clear to many of those people, or the potential impacts, there are plenty of people who sat down and read the initiative before signing this, and I would say that, you know, with more than 7,000 signers, surely some people understood the impact that this would have. And so, there's, you know, I, I just think it's fair to say, and, and I've heard from folks who did not feel comfortable coming into this room to express a differing position. And I think it's worth acknowledging that there are people who might have felt differently, who didn't want to be here today because it was too intimidating. So, in the...
It's okay, folks, please.
I don't need heckling from the crowd, thank you. I, I'm just voicing that I have heard that from some residents who have not felt comfortable entering the conversation. So, my hope is that a collaborative conversation would mean bringing back information about what the sideboards are, what the concerns are, what the definitions and understandings were to this, to these chambers, to continue having an open and transparent process. But I think it's fair to say that there were people who didn't want to show up today, and people who did read what they were signing, because I believe it's being characterized in only one light. And with over 7,000 people, surely there was some nuance there. So, anyway, I look forward to the conversation with the ad hoc.
Okay, thank you. I've got Supervisor Bushnell, and then Wilson in the queue.
Thank you through the chair. So when Director Ford was explaining the financial impacts, and that would be passed to the farmer, I said to the businesses, to everybody in Humboldt County, and I, I want to just echo what Supervisor Bone said. It is what, especially in the southern Humboldt area right now, someone said Garberville looked like a bomb went off. Well, yes, there, there are some issues down there with the businesses that were supported so well with the cannabis community, and it is largely suffering right now. And so while the impact to the process and the initial investment of, if you want to call that, would be from the farmer to the Planning Department, the, the loss of what would happen in this community is huge, with the remaining farmers that are here, that are trying to, to pivot and, and be, you know, good community members, which they already are, and put that money back into our mom-and-pops and brick-and-mortars, and trying to stay here and support this Humboldt County. Someone, one of the commentators had said, "The ones that didn't care left," or "Couldn't make it left, and we're here and we're dedicated." That's a true statement. You have so many farms that, that you already saw that have left, there are, what is it, Director Ford, 1,300 left right now? Out of those 1,300, how many are contemplating whether they're going to be able to cultivate this spring? And trying to decide, "Do I hang out and try the next year? Do I do this? Do I try one more time?" Well, that "one more time" puts money back into our community, and we, I recognize that. My, my hope is what Supervisor Arroyo said, that we can sit down and hopefully, and I know Betsy's listening, obviously, because she emailed, they're listening, and realize that maybe there is some compromise. Many of you have said that the 1.0 and 2.0 need some tweaking. So maybe that's where this came from, and I do think you're right. People did read initiative. Some people just don't want cannabis here. End of story. And so, you know, that's, that's, we can't change their minds. But for the, for the some that didn't read the initiative, because there are those two, then we need to educate, and that's my hope.
Thank you. And so Supervisor Wilson?
And I assume that the motion maker, Supervisor Bone, you're making the motion for the full A through B on the, on the staff recommendation, is that, you know, I can read, read them out if you want, but it's, it's allow the public to find, of the analysis recommendation we did, that make a motion to form an ad hoc committee to work on the following: meet with sponsors of HCRI to determine if alternative actions to voter consideration of the initiative are feasible; and B, work with HCRI sponsors, the public, cannabis industry stakeholders, and staff. And by public, I would include our environmental organizations as well, to develop ordinance modifications; and C, in the event that A and B are not feasible, develop a strategy to respond to HCRI as submitted. Okay? I just wanted to clarify the duties.
And I, and I, the stakeholders, the ones that are going to be affected, I mean, we were talking earlier today, when we were talking housing and apartments and all this stuff, we make a lot of rules up here that we don't have to abide by, and we don't talk to the people we're making the rules for. I mean, you heard a developer applicant say that, who's built houses for 40 years. And as far as, and it's kind of funny, I, the part where you've got phone calls about people being intimidated, I, I remember eight years ago, when these same people were coming in, trying to work on a cannabis regulations, 1.0, 2.0, and if you want to see people intimidated, these were people that were... people that were trying to legalize their illegal grows, giving their addresses, giving their names, under full pretense of they were probably involved in the legal industry, but they put faith in us to do what was best for the county environmentally, for them and their families. So if you wanted to see real intimidation, that was, and there were people, there were a lot more people, and we're seeing, we're seeing the influx of what happens when a market drops. And we've done this with timber, we've done this with fish, but people still want to say that timber industry's dead, and you've heard me say we spent $80 million on infrastructure in the last five years on the timber industry. So it's not dead, it's just a little bit different. Fishing industry, had a great, pretty good crab season this year. Salmon, probably not so much. But what I'm saying is, and we've got this new fangled thing where you can call in, and that was, that was another option, and what I'm saying is, I did not, and I nowhere said that out of the 7,000 people, they were all lied to and didn't know what they were looking at. I'm sure they always, a lot of them read the whole thing, but the understanding, the way it's written, I'm not so sure. I wouldn't have signed it if I didn't know a little bit about the situation, because it's not helping the small farmer out there. And I mean, there's a, I wanted to read it, but I didn't. We're talking about five farms, four farms over 100 acres in Lake County. We're talking, we only have four farms over seven acres. Our biggest controversial farm, one of our biggest ones down there in McCann, was only five and a half acres on 7,000 acres. So we, and Mark Glovelace will always win the award of, when we were talking about small farms and big farms, and if everybody remembers what a big farm is, a big farm is any farm that's bigger than the one I have. So I think that was the best line ever. We do not have big farms. We have, and we've limited them to 10, a maximum of what we have. So we wrote, we wrote with a lot of using the transparency and everything else, we wrote a very good ordinance, we upgraded it with 2.0. Does everything need to be tweaked? That's why you go through a general plan every 55 years for us, but I mean, that's why you go through a general plan. So the whole idea of what we're doing is to make this better for everybody, but to make it better isn't to cut somebody off at the knees and say, "Okay, no more of that, and we never have to worry about it again." I don't think that's where we want to head.
Okay, so I've got Supervisor Arroyo in the queue?
I thought I wasn't.
Oh, sorry, Supervisor Wilson, then Arroyo.
I just wanted to emphasize that part of the reason some of these spaces can be intimidating is we often talk in terms of presupposing people's intentions, but we believe that they think about something. We say, "Well, their intention is this, and their intention is that," and unless someone states that intention explicitly, we really can't presume their intentions, and when we do that, it makes it, it just makes it hard for people to speak honestly in a space. And so I just want to, I know, and I know, I often say that, "Please don't put words in my mouth," you know, those sorts of things, and we do this to each other often, and I can see that it does, it is, we can't walk into spaces where we're doing negotiations with, with an assumption of intention of our, of the people we're going to be working with. Even if our intentions, I have to tell you, sometimes we even layer our own intentions by what we say because we have something farther back in our psyche about what we think the world is like or how it should be. So I just want to make sure that we all do our best to try not to do that. With that, I support the motion, I support the effort to move forward, I support the two supervisors and our staff to see what we can do to work something out that is just better policy. And I'm not worried about getting halfway to anything, I just want to get better policy done and something functional coming out the other side, because I think a lot of people who, even if they've read the initiative, may not have the, had had the foresight or understanding, or even the time to analyze the details of the legal issues that we would all have to go through with relationship to this, and I can appreciate that. So thanks to everybody for having this conversation.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
I just wanted to note that I, you know, I heard what Supervisor Bushnell read aloud from one of the proponents. The email that was read earlier in the meeting did, you know, express some consternation about the idea of an alternative action to the initiative, and I want to, you know, note that I hear that, but I think our first meeting will really be a chance to talk about the staff report, you know, clear up any misunderstandings, and then see if there's some room to move forward with something different, whatever that might be. And we'll bring back information, but like you said, I don't have any preconceived notions about what this will look like, but I appreciate that we're willing to go through this and that the proponents are willing to converse. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'll just say for my closing remarks that thank you all for hanging in there and being those responsible farmers that you are. I agree with many of the commenters who talked about how, you know, this has been whittled down to the really responsible farmers, and I absolutely agree. I'm sorry for those that fell by the wayside along the way, but for those of you who stuck with it, thank you. We hear you. We're doing our best to try and adapt and evolve and work with this. I was thinking about how Nike has a slogan, what is it?
Just Grow It.
So, I don't know, maybe our slogan is "Just Grow It"? No, I'm just kidding. Anyway, so with that, I believe we're ready for, okay, Supervisor Bushnell, please. Closing remarks.
Thank you. As I look around the room and I heard the commenters today, I recognize a lot of you live in very rural Humboldt County, and that Willow Creek comes over a huge mountain that's full of snow, the worst storm ever in my lifetime with snow. And I want to thank you for your passion, your commitment to your industry, and for being here, even trekking through that worst amounts of snow. It's horrific out there, and so I feel your passion, I feel your commitment, I think this entire board does, and just our sincere thanks.
So I would say let's vote with our tabs, but I think a computer or two are closed, so we'll do a roll call vote.
That sounds good.
The mic's ready.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you to the staff as well.
And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Michelle and John, can you guys prepare calendars for this?
Sure. I have three or two minutes. I have a few. I have a few.